Calling the meeting to order, it's six thirty, Monday, August the tenth, and this is the Council of Edersburg Cardinal Committee of the Whole Administration and Finance Committee meeting. And next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. And somehow I've lost my list. I don't know, I don't know. Who has the motion to approve the agenda?
We don't have it.
We don't have it.
We don't have it.
I'll talk to it.
Call seconded.
Okay, so I have a mover and a seconder, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. And item number three is disclosure for community interest in the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures here?
None.
Okay, so I'll make a disclosure, and I haven't yet filed the paperwork with the clerk. I'm gonna make a disclosure with regard to item number six A, which is improving connectivity in Ontario. The COGCO bid to provide fiber optic to the home from Johnstown Highway two east towards Cardinal. So when we get to that item on the agenda, I'll be leaving the chair. I'll be leaving the chair and I'll be going to the audience. So that's my disclosure, and I'll file the paperwork. And there are no other disclosures. So item number four on the agenda is business arising from the previous Committee of the Whole meeting. And the minutes were circulated as the meeting of, well, not as a meeting of, July the thirteenth. Are there any things to come forward? Counselor Cameron.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have one or two. First one is on page three. And it is item six B regarding the last sentence on the Cardinal walking track. It was noted that the township is hoping to have the ice back in Cardinal Arena by, from mid-August. I'd just like to know from staff through the chair whether or not that's on track or not.
So through the chair, right now, the ingredient center has about in between a half inch and three-quarter inch of ice on there. The lines were painted today, so they are on schedule for the August fifteenth timeline originally planned.
Fine, thank you very much, Mr. CAO. And the next one is on page seven, and it's bullet point number nine, bullet point, I guess, four, waiting to confirm dates for upcoming opening, grand openings. Is any word on that?
No, nothing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Just so you know, I was hoping to get Mr. Clark, Honorable Steve Clark, and MP Barrett down to ELC Auto Sales on Friday, but it's holiday season and they begged off for a second opportunity sometime later on. And as far as Mulders goes, they don't want to have any kind of a grand opening or ribbon cutting until they've done their paving in front of their, in front of their new building and erected some signage. So that, both of them are on hold here temporarily.
Thank you.
And just to make you aware, one other small issue with regard to Mulders, seventeen feet from the edge of the pavement in towards their building is owned by the county, not by them. So there's only a small section of about eight or ten feet in front of their building that they intend to pave. And I'm working with the county to try to get the county to pave the remaining seventeen feet from the edge of their property out to the edge of the roadway. And it's been about three months now, and I still can't get a committee, a commitment from the county. So I don't know what's gonna happen there, but this is just all information. So are there any other questions arising from the minutes?
I have a question if I could, Mayor.
Yeah?
I just wondered if those dead oak trees that came out, was that due to flooding along the, you know, the couple of winters or springs when flooding was high, or was that ever determined would be, what caused it?
What's the page reference?
Oh, it's on page six of seventy-seven, and it's item number eight.
Six of seventy-seven, item number eight. And I noticed that in that myself, that it referred to them as oak trees. And I didn't know that we had oak trees in that area, and oak trees seldom die.
There were three of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely were oaks.
Yeah. And so, and I guess the essence of your question is what happened?
Well, I just wondered if they, it was determined what caused the trees to die? And I wondered afterwards if it had been, you know, we had a couple of spring floods in there, and whether it was the flooding that caused it, or...
Wouldn't think that'd kill them though, 'cause we got in one area of ours there that watered up along the memory spring.
They were, they liked water. Oaks like water.
Yeah.
They were, they were... Okay, so before we get too much discussion going, the essence of the question is, do we have a reason that those oak trees died? Were they removed and were they replaced?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do not have a definitive reason of why they died. They have been removed, and we are working with South Nation Conservation to have some trees planted this fall.
Okay, so can we get an answer from somebody as to why these oak trees died? There's gotta be a reason.
So I think they've been removed now.
Through, through, through the chair, they've been removed. It's unlikely that we would be able to...
Who removed them?
Our staff removed them.
Okay. You don't have an arborist or something that looks at these kinds of things? Can someone give you an idea of the size of the stems or the trunks?
They were, they were large.
They were?
They were, yeah. Yeah.
Minimum, minimum foot across.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so fairly substantial then. Okay, one other question, then going back to, the first question was asked, which had to do with the arena walking track. I'm told that the walking track is closed today, is that correct?
Through, through the chair, that is correct. Typically while the ice surface is going, is going in, the walking track is closed. That's, that's an annual item that we, we close during ice installation.
Okay, so is the, are the walkers kind of tell, told when that's gonna happen?
Yeah, yes, the walkers were advised, I wanna say, some time last week.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, so no more questions with regard to that. Do I have item two? Well, that's business arising, and I guess these minutes get approved at the council meeting, right? Okay. All right. So the next item on the agenda is delegations and presentations. We have none, and so we get to item number six A, which is improving the connectivity, which is the COGCO item. And so I'm gonna take leave of my seat, and the deputy mayor will chair this item from his seat, and I'll be back. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For better or worse.
All right, so moving into discussion, item six A, if I could get the CAO to give us some background on or of or the on, on six A.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the government of Ontario has launched the Improving Connectivity for Ontario program. We received the correspondence from COGCO asking for a letter of support to improve internet speed and service in the, in the Johnstown to Cardinal area. Part of the COGCO had indicated a short, shortfall of funding for the project work, but at this particular stage, they've indicated that if the, if the township and COGCO could not reach an agreement by, with respect to that gap by November, it would be something that they would remove from the, they would remove the submission. Also, indicate today that we, we received a similar request from Bell for a letter of support for, for a similar project.
So open the floor to questions or concerns through, through the chair, too.
May I, Chair? Chair, with the Bell's recommendation and the letter of potential support, are they looking for financial assistance, too?
Through, through the chair, at first glance, it does not appear that they, that they're indicating a funding gap. But I think at this stage, I would say both are just sort of letters of support for, for the program.
Good. Go ahead, Jack.
I just don't see the point of a company that's going to be in a network system that they're gonna make money off, and it's not a cheap thing that they're doing to be asking council to come up with thirty-one thousand dollars for, for what they, they wanna do to build a, build their system up and make more money off. I really don't see that. I don't think it's me just way of getting a few extra dollars on their pocket, thirty-one thousand dollars talking across them. If they're getting so much government funding and stuff on it now, I don't really see that. I have no trouble giving them a letter of support, we're glad to do it. We've got to pay any money towards them.
I, I concur Counselor Hunter's concerns on that. Letter is approved, I, in fact, I think we have sent two out, if I'm not mistaken. And... Anyway, that's all, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Just for, just for clarity, the two letters that we've sent out, Mr. CAO, they were expressions of interest, exploratory things. This is a continuation of those letters? Or is this separate, different from those two?
Through, through the chair, a fair, a fair question, and I don't have, I don't have a complete answer on that.
I just wondered if there was any correlation between the fiber optics candidates being processed down?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jack, two?
I have two questions, well, issues, I guess, or questions. Number one, have you seen any of the plans that either company is contemplating? In other words, would the sub-tending roads be serviced, or is it only Highway two that's gonna be serviced?
So through, through the chair, at this stage, we haven't seen a detailed plan of the submission. It's just more at this stage, supporting the, the concept of bringing improvement.
I wonder if in our support letters, we could, I mean, maybe, maybe others don't agree with me, but maybe we could mention that we would appreciate having the company consider the sub-tending roads that flow off of Highway two. There's not that many, you know, but Blair Road has got, what, twenty-five or so homes down there, and that type of thing, so Empire Hannah, North Channel, and so on.
Chair, I think it might be taken in that, Mr. Bradley, is three hundred and three people, three hundred and three homes?
Yeah.
I can't see three hundred and three homes from Johnstown to Cardinal.
No.
On number two, you know?
There's, yeah, no, when we did the count for...
Two for gas.
Yeah. It's one eighty-five or something.
Yeah, right, so I think, I think you are included.
Yeah, it does say in the document either three oh eight or three oh...
Right.
So I think, I think it is included, like people like...
Okay, and the second issue, of course, is the issue of the money, the thirty-one thousand. Like, I find that surprising, because these companies, they do extensive studies on implementation projects, and if they can't generate a rate of return that's satisfactory to the corporate needs, they don't do the project. And that's why we got gaps in our EORN system, is because the partner involved in that system did extensive studies, and there's areas where there's one or two customers. They can't justify putting in the capital expenditures for a tower and a cell site and all that stuff. So the same applies here. If they can't justify a rate of return that's sufficient for the corporate need, you're not gonna do the project. So the letters of intent or expression of interest, in my view at least, would, should be that, please keep us informed, okay? But maybe in the back of our mind, we should be thinking that, why are they looking for some money? That's...
Good.
Good. I think in my, in my reading of, of this is that, you know, there's a, they're declaring a need for the area, it's obviously underserviced, and, you know, they're giving us the opportunity to support their bid for funding to do that, and they're asking us, along with that, you know, the small amount of thirty-one thousand, do we want fiber optic, you know, in our area or not? And that's, that's the little dollar value they've attached to it. With, with, with that support from us, you know, they're saying they'll go ahead. Without that support, they're saying it won't, but, you know, as we've heard today, Bell's certainly knocking at the door if they're not. Personally, if everybody else is done, I'll just throw my two cents. So, you know, I see no, no harm like the CAO has indicated, and we have till, the way that I read the letter gives us, you know, full negotiating ability. We're just signing the letter to, in support of their application, and we have until November to, to back out of that. So basically, we're allowing them to go ahead, you know, with our support until, until November. We, you know, we can pull the plug if we're not comfortable or we can't reach a fine deal. That's, that's the way that I, that I read it. Am I wrong?
We're not paying them any money now.
No.
Not if our response should be positive and supportive, and...
Yeah.
And see where the chips fall.
Ultimately, we want, at least the way that I read it, is that we want, you know, fiber op, we're seeing it right now with people moving out of the cities to our area to do work, people working from home, that we've identified it with the EORN and the cellphone gap, you know, you just spoke of. The more fiber optic networking that we can have, the better chance for development our township has.
Well, you know, the, anybody using the internet in, in our area, our, here in the south there, the service is awful.
Yeah, and that's, and this recognizes that in the application. It's to get us to fifty, fifty down, ten up, right?
Yeah, you're getting one up now sometimes.
Yeah, if you're lucky. Like, I don't get one up at my house. So this, you know, this is to support that, and, and I mean ultimately, that supports growth. Without, without these kind of proposals, we, we don't get the kind of growth we need. So, okay, so, Mr. CAO, what, what, what do we need to do at this point? What do I need to, do we need to, the recommendation is that we support the letter as it's written, 'cause I don't know that I have, I don't know that I have, you know, I have two that have, that have been, three, I think, if I include Jack, that are expressing no funding in that letter, so is that correct? Like, Counselor Cameron said, no, you, you don't want to include...
I'm, I'm not in favor of the funding.
The willingness to fund.
Do we have to mention that in the response? I don't think there's...
Phase one is just a sales pitch.
Okay, so we can skip the funding part, and we can still endorse the letter as it is without endorsing actual funding. Correct. So all we're trying to do for this recommendation is endorsement of this letter. We're not endorsing any funding, we can still stay away from it.
So through, through the chair, correct. So, so what we would need is a mover and a seconder to vote in, in providing a letter of support to COGCO and/or Bell, and, you know, both, like I...
Yeah, or anybody else.
For, for, for the phase one. If, if the draft, if the draft letter is, is satisfactory, then we will proceed to...
Great, so has everybody had a chance then to read the draft letter as, as it's written? It's on page eleven of seventy-seven. Is everybody comfortable with the way that it's written? Does anyone want changes to the way that it's written? Or is that ultimately what we're gonna ask, right? Is, we're gonna ask for a mover to move this letter for support, and then we're gonna ask for a seconder and we'll take a vote on it. So if anybody wants any changes, now's, now's probably the time.
Well, these two letters that are here now, they've already gone out, have they not?
Through, through the chair, the, the first letter has not went out. The second letter did go out in, on November twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen.
Okay, thank you.
I presume we can make changes to the letter, right? This is only a suggestion, right?
Correct. This is, this is...
So, Highway two, you want, J.J.? Well, I would like to somehow get the wording in, the wordsmith it somehow, that it's not just Highway two. The implication there is that it's Highway two.
Right.
Further discussion on that, or no? I'm finding the way it's written. You guys, if you, if you're not, now's the time, and there's only one...
No, I think we should change it to, I don't know how you're gonna word it, but like Mr. Bradley said, off of Highway two. I would like that changed somehow, or it includes off.
Make a suggestion.
Sorry?
Make a suggestion.
Well, I don't know how, whatever you can word it, it, it's Highway two and...
Sub-tending roads.
Yeah, roads off.
Majors.
Roads off of two from, from Johnstown to Cardinal. Something along that line, which take it, Blair Road, North Channel.
Are you serviced in Johnstown with COGCO?
Yeah, I love it.
So I think through, through, through the chair, if I may, unfortunately, with the, with the short timing, we, we don't have their, their complete plan, so if we're changing that to include this, this, this or that, they had said the plan to connect these homes along is a welcome project, right? So I, I think what we're saying is that, that the project is, is welcome, whether, you know...
Whether they go up Blair Road or doesn't...
Well, you won't get three hundred homes on Highway two, that's for sure.
No, you, you, you won't. So the plan, the plan is very, very well made. Incorporate that, unfortunately, at this particular stage, I, I don't know.
And phase one is a sales pitch, so if you see somebody around this...
It's not critical, let me...
Well, eventually it will be, if we get into some kind of direct talks and... Yeah. I'll, I'll make that talk.
Okay, so you'll move to support the letter as written?
I will.
All right, I need somebody to second that then as well. Is, are we through with discussion? Has everybody made their, sorry, Mr. CAO?
Sorry, and as part of that motion, if you could just direct that the, that the mayor submit that in, in advance of the August twenty-first.
And, and be, will we be able to do that?
If we, if, if, unfortunately, the timing is, it is short, so if the, if all those are in favor...
All he has to do is sign, his letters here, all he has to do is write his name on it.
He has to be directed by council to do so. And he's not included in the discussion, but because it's a direction of council, then he can still execute. Yes. But we don't have a council meeting until...
Twenty-eight.
Technically, we're good?
I think we're, I think we're good.
Okay, all right. Second, so moved by Counselor Dillabach, seconded by John Hunter. Discussion's good. And do you, do you need, what did you need in addition? Are you comfortable with?
I think we're good.
We can just vote?
Yeah.
Yes? So all in favor of, of the recommendation?
Yes.
You name it, Chris. And so we're back to, and we're finished with that one, and we're going to six B, and the mayor is back to the table.
Thank you.
Much more comfortable that, you know, in your meeting?
Maybe not when we get to the meeting.
You're not gonna do that again, are you?
Okay, so on item, item six B. Six B comes under the heading of teeny tiny houses. And just to say that this came about because of Habitat for Humanity opening their first build in Cardinal last Friday, I guess it was. And prior to that, I'd had a talk with Ernie O'Leary, who's the build chair for Habitat for Humanity, Thousand Islands. And, and as Ernie's letter indicates, they've commissioned the building of three of these teeny tiny homes, going to be built by the Employment and Education Center in Brockville, and they're looking for a place to put them. Now, I don't know how many council members were around for some of the early education about teeny tiny homes, but basically teeny tiny homes are described as four hundred to five hundred square feet, sometimes a little bit smaller, three hundred square feet. And it's a kind of a new concept that's developing in the cities, and not just in the cities, but in the rural areas as well. So Ernie's looking for a place for them to put one of those, if not all three. And it's always best, of course, if these kinds of new builds go on sewer and water, although we do have one new teeny tiny home in the township that has an engineered sewer system. That's a, an engineered composting system. And chief building official is dealing with that one right now and trying to determine whether or not it's congruent with our bylaw, because our bylaws, as it relates to teeny tiny homes, are basically silent. So I'm just raising this as a, as an issue right now for two reasons. Number one, Habitat for Humanity is looking for more space, and number two, Steve Pence, our planner, in the discussion that we had with him earlier last week, indicated that they will be required to address the whole concept of teeny tiny homes in our new zoning bylaw. So the matter is, I'm not recommending anything at this period of time, but I just want council to be aware of it, that it is a coming trend, and for sure, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing is looking for any kind of a way to put additional housing types of any kind into the marketplace. So anything that we might do to, let's say, find a spot for, let's say, five or ten of these teeny tiny homes would be well received at a number of different levels. End of discussion on that item unless there are questions. Counselor?
You said this would be well received by the provincial government place. These are willing to fund the lot purchases for them, or...
No. And again, the answer to that is no, but they will assist with zoning through, if we can't, if we can't adjust our own zoning bylaws as required, they will assist with ministerial zoning orders if we ask. And there, I don't know whether you're following the news these days or not, but the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing is issuing quite a number of ministerial zoning orders, basically on lands that are privately owned and that are in, where there's going to be large buildings built, big apartment buildings, sixty, fifty units, that kind of thing, and the developer has been a year getting to this point, and is running into problems and problems and problems. And the way it works is that the council of the day passes a request to the minister for a ministerial zoning order, that ends the discussion, and the project goes ahead. So there's a lot of oomph behind the desire for additional housing units. Yes?
Through the chair, and this is just more of a question going back to our official plan process where, where we discussed tiny homes. And my recollection, I haven't looked back at, at that document, but my recollection of, of the way that we talked about tiny homes in our official plan was that they were going to be granny suite style additions where there already was an existing house on a property, and it would go in addition to something else. This, and maybe I'm wrong, and if I am wrong, then somebody can correct me. But the way that I read this is we're talking about having one or more of these on a single lot by itself, and the way that I remember the discussion for the official plan was they were in addition to something that was already serviced.
Well, and I think it goes both ways. I think they're looking for any kind of way to accommodate them that we can come up with. But... But for sure, I mean, in the cities, there's a tremendous push to allow them on single-family residential home lots as an addition, a second dwelling unit. Big push though.
So, that's the way I remember our discussion going about it for the official plan. And like the one we were changing the official plan was, then you said it perfectly there with the way that you just said it, like a secondary.
So, when you talk zoning, would that include the fact that it might evolve into a different tax class? Like, let's say you have a single-family home in a city or municipality, and you add one of these tiny homes. Does that become then, or move from residential to some other category, which is a different, would have a different tax?
Okay, so the whole issue of tax classes, I think we have to put that question to the treasurer, and I don't know whether there's been any discussion about, does the addition of a teeny tiny home to an existing, onto an existing property, does it change the tax class?
There hasn't been any discussion with respect to that type of dwelling. You know, we do have multi-res as opposed to res, and there's a delineation of what that has to be to be considered multi-res. Multi-res is the same tax class as res, so like the...
Same tax rate?
Tax rate.
Doesn't have to be, though.
It doesn't have to be, but the ratio is still, at the county level, the ratio is still one to one.
Oh, it is.
Right now, it's multi-res. So, you know, it would be at the upper tier that determines the ratio.
Yep.
And I don't know whether there's been discussion at the upper tier, whether there's, anybody's determining the ratio for that specific tax class.
Now, going back to your original question, so while it may not affect, and because we don't have a tax class that accommodates it, and the ratio is set by the county, there's still the other issue. If you move a ten thousand dollar pre-constructed teeny tiny home onto an existing lot, does it change the assessment on the lot? Because that would also affect the tax.
Yep.
And I don't know whether impact is...
That was my underlying issue, was whether or not they, Empac would see that as a, you know, an increase in assessment.
Has there been any talk with Empac about that?
Not specifically about that, but if you put an accessory building of any sort, like a shed or a garage, it is assessed on top of your house. So, I would assume that there'd still be assessed value to a property, to a structure of that nature.
Okay, any further questions, Counselor?
There's always a question, I just have observation, I have a question. I agree with our deputy mayor, I understood we were talking in our official plan, this was a kind of an add-on thing to, granny suite or whatever you want to call it, or an addition on a farm, or somebody working to save in a separate unit or not. But I think one thing we've got to consider too is we're putting these stay at the village here, or in Cardinal, or in Johnstown. If you allow one of these houses, teeny tiny homes, to go on a lot there, it's maybe gonna affect assessment, but they added something to that house there. What's it gonna affect the value of the houses beside them? If you start moving these teeny tiny homes in beside this house, and I got a half million dollar house here, and now all of a sudden I got a fifteen thousand dollar little tiny house, and two houses of a lot beside me there. A lot of people aren't gonna wanna buy that house, though.
And, you know, you raise a major issue there, and that's an issue that we're going to have to deal with at the zoning bylaw meetings, because that issue will have to be dealt with. I mean, when considering just Johnstown, and considering the fact that most of Johnstown, all of Johnstown is on sewer and water, wells and septics, I mean, do we even want to allow that kind of thing to happen in a place where there's no municipal sewer and water available? Same with Spencerville. Do we want it to happen on lots here in Spencerville? Do we want it to even happen in the countryside?
Well, and if I may, to add to that, I think, you know, we're seeing it with Airbnbs and development and rentals. And so, then you could take that to riverfront properties and to people that wanna connect them to their wells and septic or their composted engineered systems, and taking up riverfront lots with these as well. So, that may go on where people already have existing homes, but if somebody buys a lot and puts a teeny tiny home on it, and it may prevent, you know, future development of a two hundred, not a two hundred thousand, a two thousand square foot home instead, then yeah, tax revenue certainly reduced, so.
And we also get into the same problem that we're having, if we start allowing these, especially allowing riverfront property, all of a sudden these become bed and breakfasts.
Well, I mean, you can see the whole, you can see the whole basket of issues that come forward. And the only reason I wanted on this agenda is because I think it's something that we have to start thinking about. And we have to start developing a positionings and positioning ourselves, or policies.
And we're in the perfect position to do that right now as we do that comprehensive zoning bylaw review. And that's why when we have those discussions, it's important, you know, maybe for both Counselor Cameron and Counselor Hunter for at CDC, because that's where they'll be, you know, to, you know, hear that and be part of the...
Yeah, and I know that, and, you know, there's, I mean, all of the issues that were raised around David Street and New Wexford. I mean, I've talked to numerous people, and I've indicated to them that CDC is the place for them to have their input as to the zoning bylaws. And so, I would just echo the deputy mayor's comments for Counselor Hunter and Counselor Cameron to kind of watch those first Mondays of the month, and if you can be here, especially when Mr. Pence is here. I think it's really important to be here. Okay, I don't wanna belabor this, I just wanted to get it up on the agenda. And so, I'm moving on now then to item seven A, which is the second quarter council remuneration report. And you have the report in front of you, and I think, unless I miss my guess, did I not see? Did I not see? Yeah, here it is. Sure did. So, there is a, kind of a, where we are at this point. Now, this is up to June the thirtieth. So, are there any questions here? Just treasurer's providing us with this, so there's no surprises at any point along the way. Any discussion here? If not, I'm about to move on. Okay, I'm moving on to the item seven B, which is the annual investment report. And the report outlines investment activities, and you can see that... I'm having a little bit of trouble deciphering my way through this. I had this discussion with the CAO, but I can't, I didn't have time to go back and reconcile it with other reports. And in my mind, it doesn't reconcile. I can't reconcile, for example, the Port of Johnstown investments here at all. So, and the reason I can't reconcile is because the chart at the top of the page does not in any way, without me doing a bunch of math, blend itself into items one and two underneath it to come to the total investment portfolio at the Port of Johnstown, and have the same trouble with the other page, the report on page nineteen. So, is there any further discussion here? You can see from the report that it does pay us to have some of our excess cash invested. And even though interest rates are low, we are well invested, and some of our investments are doing rather well. And when you see, for example, that we've earned a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars of interest just on the township's investment accounts, I mean, a hundred and twenty-three thousand is not something to sneeze at. So, are there any, is there any further discussion with these investments?
Yeah, especially when it's safe.
Your pardon?
They're very safe investments.
Yes.
And that's still a sizable chunk of interest. I mean, it's a huge amount of money as well, but it's, they're very, very safe, so.
Yeah. Other discussions here?
I have a question. Can someone explain on page nineteen, third paragraph down, one investment fund portfolio divided up between three different investments? And then it's got the bond portfolio, the universal corporate bond portfolio, the Canadian equity portfolio. And beside each one of those, there's a dash with some timings, eighteen months to three years, and ten... What do those timings mean?
To the treasurer?
Through the chair, those are basically the length of term that those portfolios do the best. So, that's kind of like the time, the timing, if you leave your investments within those different portfolios, there's better rate of return.
So, in the bond portfolio, you have some bonds that might go eighteen months, and some that go two years, and some that go three.
So, when we place the money, when the port places the money with the one investment program, they have investment brokers that take the pooled amount of money.
So, it's pooled, then?
It's all pooled, and then it's invested based on the best...
Is that the same with the universal?
Yes.
Whereas four years?
All three is within the same portfolio.
Right.
And they, one investment, investors are the ones...
So, they're trying to balance it, basically?
They balance it and try to get the best rate of return within those terms.
But those are sort of to be seen as the horizons?
Yeah.
You should think in terms of those horizons for best return.
Yes, well, that's, I mean, hopefully, the managers in the one portfolio group, I don't know who runs it, RBC, I guess.
No, AMO.
Oh, AMO.
It's under AMO.
Okay, so you'd think those portfolio managers are on top of their game, hopefully. And you're getting, you know, the best you can get out of a five-year, out of the equity side.
Right now, the township can really only invest, the township or the port can only really invest in bonds with AMO, because they are recognized by the government as a safe place.
As a safe organization.
Yeah, safe place. The only way we'd be able to go outside of that type of investment would be to become a prudent investor ourself. And no municipality really has, or small municipality really has difficulty becoming a prudent investor. So, this is the safest...
So, do you have a listing of, say, the equity portfolio, what's in it?
We can achieve a listing.
You can go on a computer and see what's in it?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Now, again, it's a broad portfolio, and we're, it's all pooled.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah. Okay, so any further questions with this investment report? Okay, hearing done. There is a recommendation that council receive the twenty nineteen investment report for information purposes, and that a copy of the report be sent to the Port of Johnstown Management Committee. Looking for a mover and a seconder, have Counselor Cameron moving and seconding, have Counselor Hunter seconding. Further discussion admitted? Hearing done. Those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, so now I'm on to the next item, which is seven C, which is the development charges survey. And this survey is provided for information only, and you can see that the town, the, we've, our staff has surveyed all of the townships around us, including Prescott, and I don't see Brockville on here or Ganonakway, but Prescott's on here. And you can see where development charges are in place and where they aren't. And I'm just, this is for information only, and I know the staff is looking for a bit of direction. Does anybody wanna make comment here? Yes?
Yes, just on the, through the chair to stand. Where the municipalities that do have development charges, do we have any idea of the amount of those charges? Like, the dollar value of the charges?
Percentage is applied to development, but we have any answer there?
I don't have that answer. I only polled the townships to determine whether they actually had them. I didn't go to the depths of how much they charge, or, I mean, most of their websites do have a listing of what their development charges are on their websites, but I didn't go to that level of detail.
Just curious, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Bradley?
In the listing here, it's evident that there's a majority that have no development charges, but I wonder if we have any kind of insight or information as to who out of this list of municipalities has industrial parks?
Okay, so if you look at the list, I can provide some insights to the list, just on the basis of my knowledge from county council. So, Augusta has an industrial park, but has no sewer, no water. And one of the major reasons that development charges first came along was to support extensions and expansions to sewer and water systems. Now, there's a number of other places where you can use development charges in addition to sewer and water and in addition to industrial parks. And then you've got the whole new concept of the community benefit charges, which is an entirely new concept, but we're not eligible for that because of the eligibility criteria. But, so let's go down. Merrickville, Wolford, limited sewer, and I don't think there's any water.
Do they have an industrial zone, does it?
That part I don't sure.
Yeah, okay.
Front of Young, no sewer, no water, no industrial park, although he has some lands that he's trying to develop for industrial purposes. Athens, as far as I know, no sewer, no water, no industrial park. I got, you correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I'm just noticing that I put front of Young twice. I'm sorry.
Oh. Well, you got the answer the same.
That's positive, that's the same answer.
Is it gonna be a different answer? No? Village of Westport, very expensive sewer system, no water, and no development, no kind of industrial development whatsoever. Very small, only six hundred people, I understand. Leeds in the Thousand Islands, no sewer and water that I know of, an industrial park, I think, but interesting, no charges. North Grenville, the largest municipality by far, developing very quickly, big sewer, big water debt, major water, major sewer debt. And I don't know whether they have, well, they do have an industrial park, yes, they do. And Town of Prescott, sewer system, water system, pools, the whole enchilada, and they do have an industrial park, and they do have development charges. Rita Lakes, again, I don't know much about Rita Lakes. I don't know whether they have sewer and water or not, do they? I don't think so. Very, very rural municipality, spread out. And then we get to Elizabeth Town, Kitlee. Now, interestingly enough, they introduced development charges, but put it on hold for two years as they reviewed to see if the charges are discouraging new development. So, don't really know what that means.
They put it on hold there, same time Brockville, but theirs on hold, Brockville's taking theirs off, so I imagine Rita Lakes is taking theirs off too.
Brockville went through a...
Well, they just put it on hold.
A six-month lapse as well.
Now, can you say more about that? They instituted it and then put it on hold, or what happened?
They put it on hold for a while, but it cut its out, and it was never developed. Then, I should they put it back on, just like you're, they brought it back in again, and they're charging again.
To Brockville?
Yeah.
Yeah, they meant to put it back in, and they actually forgot to actually add it back in. So, they went on an extra six-month holiday of that, and then now it is definitely back in, yeah.
Okay, and they're charging now?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
But it certainly has an effect on, you know, Michael Vinslet, you know, he's, every opportunity gets to be a council to speak against development charges, the additional costs being downloaded to the consumer, and that it's slowing down their development and their ability to break ground and get going as well.
The reason I bring the issue up is that our park is getting tight. And if we want to expand, and we've got the job site challenge in the back of our minds and that kind of thing, we, and we don't have charges, then the deep services that go in, either we pick them up and put them in and incur the debt for that, and then that falls on the backs of all of the taxpayers in the township. I mean, I'm saying this, everybody knows it, versus... Versus some of that being absorbed by the poth- the.
Proponent.
Proponent, yeah.
But thi- this is the interesting.
There's no, it's a balance, I mean, it's not an easy thing that just runs, you know?
No, no, it isn't, and, uh, and, uh, there is a, an overwhelming philosophy in the province that development pays for development through development charges. And so that's where the whole concept comes from. Uh, and now relating that back to our industrial park, I think we've been pretty much able to make that principle work. Because we may have financed some of the development, but we got paid back for it in full. And we didn't have development charges, it was just, that was the way the deal was made. We will finance it, but you, and we will own it, but you will pay for it over a period of time. Councillor?
There's always been the argument about development charges, going to slow down development. I've always been thinking this is a white herring that they're putting forward because you look at the places that are developing, the fastest, North Grenville, you get down cars and bars way, way there, they all have development charges, they're all expanding like crazy, they can't keep up with the development. Whenever the, whenever development starts to spread to your area, they're gonna develop, uh, they're gonna build the houses. There's a demand for them, they're gonna build the houses regardless of whether they're paying five thousand dollar development charge or like eight, come from something up in the tens of thousands, there are development charges. Charges are, and, and they can't, can't get the water lines and stuff put in fast enough for the houses to be built, so.
And basically what happens is that, is that the, the township or the municipal entity charges the development charge on, at, at the beginning, at the subdivision stage, but they just pass that through to the end buyer of the house, you know? Councillor?
Yes, and, and, and of course, as the briefing note points out, with Bill one oh eight, it's expanded now to things like libraries, uh, recreation such as, such as arenas and waterfront development, uh, just have to put that in there. And parks and development, things like that, so the, 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 the scope has certainly expanded, that's.
So the interesting question that arises from the report is, do we as a municipal council or as a committee making a recommendation to council, what is our position as far as development charges go vis a vis a recommendation to council?
So I, I just want to throw in, like, and I've heard, you know, the comments that, that other councillors have made, but I think, you know, looking at it from maybe my perspective is that, you know, that's what, like, unless, like, if there's an existing road, you're building a house on an existing road and plow's going down a road, then you build a new home on it, it, plow still has to go down the road, there's no new additional cost. You already have a library that's built, having one more person come in and use it is good service. They're paying, when they build a new home, they're paying taxes every year, um, you know, to help supplement and do that. Adding on a development charge, unless there's something new, unless there's new roads being built or unless there's new things being, or an overtaxing of those systems, I really can't see how, how development charges are anything more than, than asking somebody who's building and going to be contributing to the tax base for the next twenty or thirty years to, to pony up before they start, before they start paying taxes.
Okay, and here's, and here's the counterpoint, because I think you should understand the counterpoint to that argument. Here's the counterpoint to that argument. The snowplow is going down that road courtesy of the taxpayers in the township that paid the three hundred grand to buy it. So the development charge that we place on your new home build is your cost or is your contribution towards that capital. The library that your kids are gonna go to is there courtesy of the existing taxpayers. The development charge is your opportunity to contribute to that library and on and on and on it goes. And so it becomes a question of philosophy.
I, I get it, but I would say, you know, my willingness to spend and support a business that builds a five hundred thousand dollar home and then pays six thousand dollars in taxes.
Absolutely.
You know, we can chicken and egg and all we want.
So you get, you get to be a philosophy.
If you're in a rapidly growing, I mean, we, we don't have that kind of community rapidly growing, but if you're in a rapidly growing community, you gotta replace your library, okay?
Yeah.
And, I mean, expand it, and you've got to build another arena or whatever, you know, these are the things. So that's where the development.
Yeah, and that's exactly what was happening in Kempville. They had to extend their sewer and water, they had to build.
A sports complex.
They had to build a new sports complex, they had to build a new library, and they're going to have to make a major contribution to County Road forty-three, yeah?
So, uh, through the chair to, to staff, uh, how many new builds do we have this year? Roughly? Like, just throw a ball park in. Twelve on the lot report.
We have, we have.
Right, like, how many does Kempville have, a hundred, two hundred?
Yeah, I, 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 I don't know, I think, I think as the, as the mayor indicated, I think, I think on the second quarter building report, we had twelve.
Twelve, right? Yeah, it's something, it's not the same league. Well, maybe, you know, three, four, or five years down the road, the discussion is, is very, very, very relevant and we don't want to end up in the difficult situation that Mayor Peckford finds herself in, uh, now, um, you know, trying to catch up. So, you know, I hear ya.
But here's the counterpoint.
And I love things.
And there always is a counterpoint. So we have a ninety-four lot subdivision on the west side of Shanley Road between the railroad and wrapping in behind Cardinal. Now, if you're going to impose development charges, you want to impose those development charges a year to two years before that guy comes for his final approvals. Otherwise, you're seen to be taking advantage of a last minute opportunity. So you have to be thinking ahead to it. So, I mean, I, and I'm not one way or another with development charges, I'm just putting the arguments forward.
Is that for this fourth extension or this fifth extension?
Well, and there may not be another extension before something happens.
There's another argument to development charges too. I think the mayor has a number, how many severed lots have we got sitting on township that aren't sold?
Two hundred and fifty something.
Yeah, and maybe forty of them are up for sale.
Yes.
You put a development charge on and somebody severs one, one of those lots and has to pay the development fee on, they're gonna put that lot for sale or they're gonna build on it.
Good point.
Yeah, that's true.
Good point, and right now they're just.
We're not gonna have companies, that, every lot that gets severed, they run in and, in and buy it and sit on it until they can embrace the houses and stuff, could walk, and then they'll move in and build in those lots and they won't sell them to anybody else that wants to build on.
It does become an incentive to get your money back. Yep. So you have lots of different arguments and where are we standing, gentlemen? Yes or no? Do we want more, do we want more staff research and develop, more staff research?
No, no, not at this time, no.
Okay, so I'm getting a strong, not at this time.
And while the media's back there emphatic no from this guy.
However, however, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to add, I think it's something that as a council, we should all, we should all be certainly thinking about it as time goes by.
Well, I think you're right, and, and that, and that was the whole point of this, of this, this report coming forward. Okay, all right, I'm moving on, and the next item on the agenda is item number seven D, which is building permit software. And, uh, so we have the, uh, the briefing note in front of us. And the essence of the briefing note is that the staff is recommending uh, that we move away from our existing software, uh, which, uh, to the CAO, what's the name of our existing software? Proware?
Through, through the chair, yes, correct, it's Proware.
Proware, and the staff has spent some considerable time evaluating three other different programs, Evolta, CGIS, and Citywide. And, uh, the essence of the briefing note and the essence of the discussion is the committee recommends that council direct staff to purchase the GIS software platform for the building permit module and portal only, and plan for an implementation and be coordinated with Augusta and or Prescott as applicable and cover the annual licensing fee for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one from the modernization fund. Now, that's the, uh, essence of the recommendation in front of us, discussion, if any, councillor Kent?
Yes, uh, just through, through the chair to, to staff regarding the, uh, discount if all three municipalities, uh, go on board. If for some reason there is not, there is a one that reneges and does not get on board, does, uh, does staff have a feeling that the pricing would be somewhat reasonable even without the three?
Uh, through, through, through the, through the chair, I, I, I would say it would be, it would be reasonable, but there, there is certainly, uh, a more, more advantage of, of all three municipalities proceeding.
Understood, thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I think the other thing that's not being said here is that this was an attempt to, to, to try to regionalize the building, uh, permit or the building, uh, function. Councillor, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, uh, thank you, uh, through the chair to, to the CAO, I can't say how excited I was to see this recommendation come forward, uh, offering, you know, that collaborative approach to building, um, you know, with Prescott and Augusta through, through the purchase of CGIS. I think it's wonderful, uh, that we're hopefully moving in that direction or at least we're showing them that we were willing to move forward in that direction with them. Um, my only question is, um, going through, um, the building permit module, so, so like I have fifty-five eighty is our, is, is the, is the CGIS licensing fee for the building permit and the e-permitting portal? Is there, like, when I read through that, I was, I was struggling to figure out what exactly the total cost was and then when I looked back at everything that was on, like, the building permit module, the building permit portal, the planning module, the licensing module, the bylaw module, I, I read what was written in the note and then I went back and I tried to figure out what the total cost of everything was. Is there somewhere that I can see exactly what that total cost is and which, which module? Like, I know it says those two, but then there's an awful lot of them on the page and I wasn't a hundred percent sure of the total cost.
So to the CAO?
Yes. Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, what we, what we've done, uh, what, once again, is a little bit more of a collaborative effort is that, um, uh, all, all three CAOs have, have sort of structured the, uh, the, 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 the body of the, of the report. So, uh, for, for instance, for, for us, we are, we are just looking at the first two, uh.
First two.
Yes.
So that's fifty-five eighty?
Yes.
Right, okay.
And then, and then we get, the yearly licensing fee comes again next year at thirty-seven eighty and the yearly licensing fee for the portal comes again next year at eighteen hundred. So it's fifty-five eighty both years. Okay, go ahead.
Can I continue then? So, um, okay, so going back to that collaborative discussion, when we see the, the planning module, licensing module, bylaw module, cemetery management module, I'm assuming we're using Citywide or are we using something different for that existing, are we using it?
So, so, so through the, through the chair, the, the maintenance manager portion of, of, of Citywide, uh, we, we, we've adapted with respect to the, to, to the by, like, that would be equivalent to the bylaw module. And tho- those are, those are a number of the reports that you're receiving, uh, the quarterly reports, they're all generated from, from Citywide. So, so, so there is the adaptability with the, with that module in Citywide.
With that module in Citywide?
Correct.
Not in CGIS?
Well, there, there's, there's specific, um, and distinct module components in CGIS.
They talk to each other, like in other words, will CGIS talk to Citywide then?
No, they will not, they, they will not talk to each other.
Go ahead.
Um, so, uh, going back to that collaborative effort in the CAO discussion, I know you probably don't want to say too much more, but, uh, I'm gonna push you a little. Um, are others planning on using or are they using CGIS for their planning, licensing, bylaws, cemetery, that sort of thing? Is that why these, we see these other numbers, like, what's the purposing behind seeing all the other modules in the packages? Uh, because if they're using it, like, I like the idea that, you know, we're kind of streamlining into something that can talk to each other and something that collaboratively all three can work together with.
So, so through, through the chair, uh, Augusta and, and ourselves will just be using the, the, the building permit, module and portal. At the Town of Prescott, I will, I believe is looking at using a number of these other modules.
But they're not at the present time?
Not at the present time, they are, they are not using any of these modules, uh, they're on Proware as well. So this is, this is a shift for them as well.
From Proware?
From Proware to CGIS and I, I am anticipating that they will be looking at, uh, more, more of a, a, a full suite of, of, of modules.
Because Prescott does not have a Citywide, they don't have an overall accounting system the way we do, is that correct?
I, I, I would say that they do not have an equivalent of Citywide at this particular stage.
Yeah.
So further discussion, councillor Hunter?
I like the idea, uh, from CGI effort that appears to be by all the modules and stuff, they have a lot of them that are already developed with other ones unknown or might be offered or in development, one thinking of, or so I think we're smart to go with the one that's already got picked up and tested and hopefully collaborative effort and we go to something with it. It already has developed, it's about easier to get other people to join in with you, because it's already proven.
My, my, uh, go ahead, councillor.
Well, uh, Mr. Mayor, are we, we're gonna be using the building modular or will we be using the bylaw modular too?
Through, through, through the chair, no, we will, we will be utilizing our, uh, through, through Citywide at this, at this stage.
Is, is there a reason why, do the chair, like, why not go with this, uh, bylaw module? Does do it, is it any better than Citywide or is Citywide better than, because we're supposed to get on to that, right? Like, as councillors, we're complaining, we could get on it, we're looking to get on it. Talking two things here.
Yeah, so, so, so through the chair, the, the, the maintenance manager through Citywide, we're, we're, we're able to, to, um, basically do a- a- as much and, and, and maybe more with the, uh, as an equivalent to the bylaw module. So, uh, we, we've invested our time in developing, uh, the, the, the reports in, in that system, so at this particular stage, we're, we're, we're not interested in, in, in expanding out to additional modules.
With CGIS?
With CGIS.
Correct. But that's, I don't think that was the, the thrust of the councillors' question. I think the coun- the thrust of the councillors' question really had something to do with something different, which is, uh, tracking and, and response to complaints, am I, am I getting, am I hearing you correctly?
Well, yes, but I just want to know, does this do it better than our Citywide? Yes, you're right, like, the difference is, we're not gonna, in other words, you're saying we're not gonna use CGIS for our bill and larger, for, for, for the, uh, bylaw module, right, we're gonna stay with Citywide.
That is, that is correct.
See, we're so, we're so far advanced with Citywide that if it wasn't for the fact of trying to be regionally collaborative, we would go with the Citywide system here. There's just no question about it. And, and Prescott and Augusta are so far behind us with regard to an overall comprehensive computerized system that this CGIS just brings them up the first step equivalent to us. So, from a regional collaboration point of view, CGIS makes sense for all three. But for us, and where we are with the Citywide program that we've got and the way that system has integrated itself into all the identicals of our operation, Citywide would be the place where we should be, but we'll, we'll attempt to collaborate here. It's gonna cost us fifty-five eighty per year for two years to see whether this attempt at regional cooperation is gonna lead to any bare fruit. That's where we are. That's where we are. Go ahead.
Is there, through the chair, is there, in an attempt to collaborate with, with building permitting, and, and I guess it is, it ultimately becomes building permits, wouldn't, isn't bylaw a big, like, didn't we just go through a big, you know, by, a full-on bylaw discussion with, you know, New Wexford with the chip truck? Like, wouldn't, wouldn't it all, like, wouldn't we want those to be sort of congruent? Wouldn't we want them to work together as well? Like, our bylaw module to work with their bylaw module?
Through, through, through the chair, I, I don't think we're at that stage yet.
We're not, okay, fair enough.
Okay, so I have a recommendation in front of me, I'm looking for a mover and a seconder. I have a mover with Deputy Mayor DeSham. Do I have a seconder, please? Counselor Hunter, seconding. Further discussion, if any? If not, we'll call a question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, and so now, I'm moving on to salary grid review, non-union personnel, and again, this is a, a review that is going to require some small expenditures of dollars, and I think this is information only, is it?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, it's just an indication that we'll be doing a survey throughout the, throughout the area. Are there any, are there any questions here with regard to this briefing? You can see the intent of it. Go ahead, counselor. Deputy Mayor?
Just, just one, and it's just for my own understanding, and, and so, when it was done last time, it was to, one of the goals was to re, like, sort of get rid of pay, like, or close the gap for pay equity. Am I right in reading the way that it's written, that it's actually sort of made, made that not happen, or, or maybe even done the opposite?
Pretty much totally pay equity. That, that program is fully in effect, I believe.
Yes, through, through the chair, that, that is correct, but I, I think an unanticipated result has, has been through the, the annual increment. So, if there's like a one percent, like CPI, then, you know, the individual at a hundred thousand versus fifty thousand, what, what, what technically happens is it spreads a little bit, and, you know.
That has nothing to do with pay equity?
No, it doesn't, no.
So, it's just strictly grid differential?
It's, it's, it's that, it's that grid gap.
Counselor?
Well, I think that's something that, I didn't look at the current union contract we had, the one before, when I was on council, we deliberately went away from a percentage increase and went to a dollar figure increase, that we didn't get that spread between classes all the time. One drivers, they weren't all crawling every year, they were getting farther and farther apart.
If you go to percentages?
Yeah.
But, but if you recall, the motion that we pass each year in January is based on percentages, not, not dollar figures. So, I think what the CAO is recommending to us is they're gonna take a look at that, what we, what we would nor, nor ordinarily call the gap differential creep, and see if they can find a mechanism to bring that creep back closer to, to what it was, say, four or five years ago. So, is there any further discussion on this? Mr. Roberts?
As you said, it's gonna result in additional cost, but it'll probably not be significant. I imagine that when the two thousand and twenty budget was made, there was a, there was a factor involved, or increase there for salaries.
So, through, through, through the chair, there, there were certainly monies assigned to, to, to complete this, this study.
To complete this study?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion? If not, I'm about to move on. And the next item is reserve and reserve fund policy update, and now, do I have the right page? I have Cardinal Hydro Reserve Fund.
Page thirty and thirty-one.
Page seven and seven F.
Seven F says reserve and reserve fund policy update. And then the first thing I have is Cardinal Hydro Reserve Fund.
No, reserve and reserve fund policy update is G, is seven G, and it's page thirty-two to thirty-four, six. What you wanna do is go to, is go to start.
Page thirty.
Thirty.
You're thirty, Mr. Mayor. I'm on page thirty.
Yeah.
I am, that is true.
That's seven E, and seven F, brother.
Well, now, just a minute. I see a, I see a discrepancy between the papers I got in front of me and my agenda here.
She's on thirty and thirty-one, Mr. Mayor.
I'm at page thirty of seventy-one, seven, and thirty-one of seventy-seven.
And that's, and that's seven F.
Cardinal, Cardinal Hydro Reserve, just seven F.
And that's seven F, you're right on, Mr. Mayor. Just a minute now.
I could never.
Ah, I've got two agendas. Let me get the right agenda. Now I'm on seven F.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, that's very good.
Okay. Thank you for helping, it's, should I say helping me out or straightening me out?
Mister, Mister Mayor, perhaps?
You do have one, did you drop it?
No, I didn't.
Throw it.
I left it at all.
Throw it.
Okay, Cardinal Hydro Reserve Fund, to obtain, purpose to obtain approval from council, to dissolve the Cardinal Hydro Reserve Fund and transfer the funds into the Cardinal Water and Waste Water Reserve Funds. That's what this is all about.
That's what this is all about.
And there's a recommendation in front of me, which I'm not gonna read right now. Discussion, if any?
Aye.
Go ahead.
All right, first, first of all, I'd just like clarification in the section background about all the second last sentence, part of it says, "And repair the Cardinal Baby Pool in two thousand and fifteen." I don't think that was, that was done. I think we gave seventeen thousand five hundred to the senior pool for the steps, I do believe. I'd just like clarification on that through the chair.
So, through, 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 through the, through the chair, the Cardinal Hydro Reserve Fund did, did pay for repairs to the baby pool in two thousand and fifteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty, I'm, I'm, I'm so sorry.
Yep.
Yes, I'm so sorry. In two thousand and fifteen, right.
Yes, in two thousand and fifteen, yes.
Sorry, it also, it also did it in, in two thousand and nineteen as well, so I'm, I'm so sorry.
About the steps over the big pool.
The big pool, that, that is correct. So, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I just misread the.
So, so, in fact, there's been three uses then. Install the water meters, repair the Cardinal Baby Pool, and then the, the steps in the, in the major pool.
Correct.
So, there's been.
Paid for the streets, paid for the streets.
Paid for the streets.
Four, four items.
Okay, now, the one point that I want to bring out here.
I'm not, I'm not done yet.
Well, then you go ahead.
Mister Mayor.
I would want to step on doing lots.
Okay, just, just to clarify things, the money is to be transferred to the Cardinal Water Reserve ending in thirty-eight eleven, and the Cardinal Waste Water ending in thirty-eight oh eight. However, seeing that money has been sitting there for, for some time with somewhat limited use, I would, I would still like to see some of this money go into the waterfront project to be put, to be put in, in there, or to be used there, I'd say, and I don't, I don't have a firm figure, but I was thinking somewhere in the area of thirty to fifty thousand dollars in there. There is really, when it all boils down, there is really no need whatsoever to dissolve this fund. We're going to continue to get a dividend as, as time goes on, as, as has been stated in the briefing note, and there's absolutely no need to touch this account whatsoever because with this account, we can use that money for whatever we want to do for capital expenses within the Village of Cardinal. So, the idea is to put it into the water and wastewater for the use of the city of the Village of Cardinal, I can certainly see the, I can certainly see the, the aspect, but we can do that anyway. We don't have to move, move things around, and we don't have to transfer anything. If you do, or if, if it does, and, and by the way, you can probably tell that I, I'm not in support of this recommendation, you're going to create a situation where somebody is going to read the uses of thirty-eight, thirty-eight oh eight and thirty-eight eleven, and say, you know something, if it goes into those two accounts, that money can be used anywhere in the township, not just for the Village of Cardinal. Whether or not that would, would or would not happen, I don't know, but at this, at this particular stage in time, the way the, the way the wording is written, it could be used anywhere.
No, the way the wording is written, it would have to go into either thirty-eight oh eight or thirty-eight eleven.
Yes, that's, you're absolutely correct. And when you read the, when you read the, when you read the thirty-eight eleven and thirty-eight eighteen with the Water Act or the Waste Water Act, it says it can be used for whatever. I can find that query in just a moment. Say thirty-eight, thirty-eight oh eight, and it says, "Coming forth through the Water Opportunities Act, mainly developing a susten, susten, sustainable plan for the municipality's services, water, wastewater, and storm for, for anywhere within the municipality." Okay? Now, whether or not that, that is the correct interpretation, I don't know, but somebody is certainly going to interpret it that way. So, it's going, it's going to give the appearance of, and I, I hesitate when to say this, because we fought so hard to get rid of this situation, but it's going to be, give the appearance that, there it is, Spencerville's taking away from the Village of Cardinal one more thing. So, with all, with all that said, Mr. Mayor, I will not, I'm not going to support this, this recommendation, as, as it sits.
Any other speakers? Counselor?
I don't read it that way at all. The reserve fund, reserve fund are set up for, for protected purpose, they're set up for Cardinal Water, Waste Water, and Cardinal Water. The fund will end, those, those can only be used in those two cases, they can't go to Spencerville. Spencerville has its own special reserve fund set up, so.
Yes, the Water Act contradicts that.
That's the way the reserve, your chair or our treasurer, I think she can explain what the reserve funds are set for.
Well, I don't want to get too far off track here, because the major issue on the, on this issue is whether or not the Cardinal Hydro Reserve Fund gets collapsed. That's the major issue, and I think we should be dealing with that issue and not get off on a bunch of side streets here. And, and when I look at it, and I'm gonna speak to this in a minute, but that is the issue, whether or not to collapse that fund. Anybody else to speak?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm a hundred percent against collapsing the, collapse the, the fund, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, like it, it's sitting right where it is and that happened, used, for instance, like the steps or the waterfront, not to go into the water, I'm firm to have it stayed where it is.
Go ahead again?
Well, I think we're getting so many reserve funds set up here, I don't really see the point of shooting extra reserve funds. The reason for this, when townships were amalgamated, was when the Cardinal Hydro was sold, it was used for, in, in the Village of Cardinal at the time. I don't really know how that got set in the first place, but that's the way it's set, it's gotta be used. The most important thing in the Village of Cardinal all the time and go, be the most constant thing over the whole thing with the amount of people there is the water and the wastewater, so I don't know why anybody wouldn't want it dedicated, but that money goes there. Ever since that fund was set up, it's just been a constant argument among the councils what this money can be used for, where it can be used to fix a pool in Cardinal, or it can be, be u, used to fix a, fix a sidewalk in Cardinal, or it's been a constant battle, and you've sat on councils a number of times, and it's come up every time, something needs to be done in Cardinal, and can we not use some of the money out of, out of that reserve fund?
I only see four things, it's two oh one. Well, that's not.
It's been used for, but that's not, there's been large arguments for it could be used.
Yeah, that's right. Deputy Mayor wants in?
Generally, generally speaking, or maybe more than that, I, I concur with Counselor Delba and, and Counselor Cameron for sure, but skipping ahead, and Counselor Cameron may have did, done this already when he talked about the reserve funds, and going to number two, which, the next one is the Cardinal Hydro account, number ninety-eight dash three-eight oh seven, the background reads, "This fund was established from the proceeds of the sale of the Cardinal Hydro to the Rito St. Lawrence Utilities, the upper limits variable policy, annual dividend that is received from the St. Lawrence Utilities as a result of the township ownership share, the entity has deposited into the reserve fund. Purpose is to use the funds for capital projects within the Village of Cardinal. I'd like to see it remain as capital projects within the Village of Cardinal, not just directed towards water and sewer."
And I'm gonna go back with a bit of history here, and it goes a long way back, because you've got to remember that when the hydro distribution systems were amalgamated, it was a forced amalgamation. You had, Cardinal Hydro had their own distribution system, they owned it, and they operated it. Iroquois had their own, Iroquois-Morseburg had their own hydro distribution system. Prescott had their own hydro distribution system, and so did Westport, and Brockville did too. But those four, Westport, Prescott, Cardinal, and South Dundas, they amalgamated theirs into what is now called Rito St. Lawrence, and this is the Cardinal legacy. It's, there's no other way to describe it, and I think the strongest argument that's been made is that every year, there's a dividend from Rito St. Lawrence that goes into this fund. But remember as well, that when that distribution system was sold for X numbers of dollars, Cardinal did not just, they did, Edwardsburg Cardinal ended up being the beneficiary of the sale, is what it announced to. But Edwardsburg Cardinal not only gained shares, some shares in Rito St. Lawrence, they took part of their money and bought shares. The other part of their money, they loaned to Rito St. Lawrence, two hundred and fifty thousand, if I recall correctly, and that two hundred and fifty thousand pays interest every year, and the interest we put into our general operating account, that's really Cardinal's loan to Reno St., Reno St. Lawrence, the interest of which goes into our general operating account. The dividend from the shares goes into this fund. There's a strong argument to be made that the interest should be going into this fund too, but let's set that aside, let's set that aside, and look at it for what it is. This council, and every council that follows us, and every council that preceded us, has the discussion, and rightly they should, can we take X numbers of dollars from the Cardinal Hydro Reserve Fund to do X or Y or Z? It's a great discussion, and we've been able to do things with money from that fund that we would not have been otherwise able to do, and little things that benefit not only Cardinal, but everybody. The steps in the pool, the repairs to the baby pool, and more specifically, the water meters in Cardinal. Cardinal paid for their own water meters out of this fund. So, I think there's a real strong argument to leaving the fund as it is, and, I mean, we got quite a number of funds, there's absolutely no question about it, and we should be proud of that, and we should also be proud of the fact of the way the treasurer handles the money. You know, so, one more fund on this list. You know, so one more fund on this list of twenty is not going to, you know, not going to make a break. So I'm hoping that, that this recommendation, I'm speaking right, I'll speak right from the chair about this recommendation. I think I already did. Don't hold back. No, I'm not going to. All right, so I've got a recommendation here in front of me. If there's no further discussion, I'm looking for, uh, I'm looking for a mover and a second.
I'd point out one thing, you mentioned that, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was loaned from that fund.
No, not from the fund.
From, from the sale.
Yeah.
To them.
To Rito St. Lawrence.
When the rea- when the water meters were put into Rito, into Cardinal, the township bought that loan and put the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in to pay for the meters.
Not true, no, not true.
You look at the box and see.
The balance of the loan hasn't changed.
No, the balance hadn't changed, because we, it paid good interest and the, and the township bought that loan.
What do you mean bought the loan?
We put the two hundred and fifty thousand, the reserves of the township, and took that loan, rather than borrow the money to pay for the meters.
I don't think so. I think we just took dollars straight out of the Cardinal Hydro Reserve Fund.
There wasn't enough there to cover.
Yeah, there was three hundred, three hundred and forty-five thousand.
Okay, so we're getting into history here, and I don't want to get into history without having the Treasurer go and check the facts here. Can you help us here? Do you know any of the background?
I, I don't know the specific numbers, uh, right offhand. I do know that there was, the, the meters were done, I don't know the specific dollar value for the meters, unfortunately. Sure it would have been over two hundred thousand, easily close to two to three hundred thousand for the meters to be installed.
Yes, and that, and that drew the fund down big time, but it, but there's still a, a substantial balance in the fund. But he, uh, I'm just, I'm just going back, uh, one of the things that I look at very, very carefully every year is the Rito St. Lawrence Annual General Financial Statement, and I generally track that statement very, very carefully for a number of reasons. Number one, the dividend, and number two, uh, our share structure, I want to make sure that some, something doesn't change in the, in the reporting where our percentage of shares somehow gets changed by error. I always check that percentage. The other thing that I always check is the loan balance in the notes, and to the best of my knowledge, the loan balance in the notes has not changed since I came on council in two thousand and six.
It hasn't changed, but before, the interest was going into the Cardinal fund. You look back and you'll see that, uh, when the water meters went in, they locked money. And Richard Bennett was their Treasurer, and he recommended rather than borrow the money and pay interest on it, that the township would take over the loan for Rito St. Lawrence and put the two hundred and fifty thousand in to pay for the meters. And we just assumed the loan, and the interest then started going into the general fund.
But if you assumed the loan, we wouldn't still be getting interest on it.
Yeah.
No, we're getting interest from Rito St. Lawrence. Interest comes from Rito St. Lawrence.
Yeah. Just said, instead of going into the, into the Cardinal Reserve Fund, it went into the operating funds. Township still has the note.
Township still owns the note, that's right. Note still reflected in the financial statements.
Yeah. That's why the interest didn't go to the reserve anymore.
Not following that one. I'm, I'm, I'm missing a cog here in the real.
Cardinal Reserve, what, was paying, paying what, two point two or something?
Yeah, two point seven eight.
At the time, if the township would have had to borrow the money to pay for the rest of the, rest of the meters, the best interest rate we could have got was about five point two. So Richard Bennett recommended that the township take over the loan at the two point two and fund the two hundred and fifty thousand over to save the taxpayer having to pay that extra interest all the time.
Okay, so you're a step ahead of me on this one, and your, your mind is too good. I'm not going to question you because you're too sharp, but I, uh, you're, you're, I, I don't understand this guy. Okay, so we've got to get moving here.
Okay, could I just, could I just make a, a counter, a counterpoint to, to that? In two thousand and ten, the Rito St. Lawrence Fund was three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. I know that because I have the figures at home, and I, and I, and I did look at it as early as, as today, or as late as today. Also, Mr. Mayor, I'd like, I'd just like to point out that the former, the former Mayor Dishaw and myself had a meeting with Rito St. Lawrence, and they were very receptive to putting the billing for the water meters on the water charges, two or three, two or three cents per cubic meter over a period of time, the meters would have been all paid off, and they would have still collected that money. It would have just been, been an ongoing, ongoing thing. They were most receptive to that, for some reason. I was not on council after two thousand and ten, so I really don't know what happened there, but I do know that they were receptive on that, on, on that plan.
Rather than paying cash upfront.
Rather than borrowing money or, or whatever.
Okay. All right, so anyway, long and the short of it, the issue that we're dealing with here right now tonight is whether or not this Cardinal Hydro Reserve Fund collapses. The recommendation that I have in front of us is that the committee recommend that council dissolve the Cardinal Hydro Reserve Fund and transfer the balance with the Cardinal Water Reserve receiving twenty-seven, two ninety, and Cardinal Wastewater Reserve receiving a hundred grand, and direct staff to deposit future quarterly interest payments into the Cardinal Water Reserve and the future annual RSL dividend payment into the Cardinal Wastewater Reserve for future infrastructure renewal. So if you don't like that recommendation, it goes on the floor and you vote against it. I'm looking for a mover and a second.
I'll move it.
Okay, I have Counselor Hunter moving. Who's seconding? And I haven't heard from you two. I need a second. I need a second.
You got, you got a second, and you can vote against it if you want it, if you want to settle it, you've got to get a vote on it.
Yeah, that's the best way to settle it. The best way to settle it is second it and vote it out.
I'll second it.
Okay, now I'm going to call the question.
Do you want to hear from them first?
I do, they're, they're, they seem to be, cats got their tongue tonight.
Well, the question is, uh, the recommendation says the interest, uh, payments, you, you mentioned they're going into op- general operating account.
I'm just reading what's in words in front of me.
Yeah, I know, but previous in your comments, you said that the interest payments on that two hundred and fifty thousand are going into the general operating account.
Yes.
So does this recommendation change that?
No, well, not if it fails, it doesn't. All right, so I'm about to call the question here. I'm going to go around the table. Counselor Delva.
Nay.
Counselor Cameron.
Nay.
Count, uh, Deputy Mayor.
Nay.
Counselor Hunter.
Yea.
Mr. Robertson.
Nay.
May I pardon?
Nay.
Mr. Radley.
Yea.
And this, and the mayor votes nay. So I got one, two, three, four, five, I think five to two. So the motion fails. All right, so now, using the proper agenda, I'm, uh, I'm at, uh, seven G, which is Reserve and Reserve Fund Policy Update. And we've got a, uh, so that's page thirty-three, thirty-four.
Starts on thirty-two.
May I pardon?
Starts on thirty-two, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, I think it does. Yes, and, uh, so thirty-two, thirty-three, and I think we have to keep thirty-three, page thirty-three in front of us to follow this through.
Goes to forty-six.
Yeah. All right, so it's our obligation to reserve, to review this, uh, policy once or so, once a year or so, uh, and, uh, we're about to do that. And I find this really strange because I'm in a number of places here. The policy is intended to set out the principles, mandatory requirements, and guidelines, and I'm on page thirty-four, for the establishment, intention, maintenance, management, and accounting treatment for reserves and reserve fund, both obligatory and discretionary. Uh, these are financial management tools that are essential part of sound fiscal policy. The maintenance of adequate reserves and reserve fund is critical to the township's long-term viability, and as I say, we should be very proud of them. Overall, reserve amounts established should be between twenty-five and fifty percent of the annual operating expenditures. Policy applies to all reserves and reserve funds, including the general reserves, the local boards, the corporate reserves, the trust reserves, and the donation reserves. And, uh, as outlined in municipal, uh, accounting principles, as outlined in the municipal financial, financial reporting handbook, all increases and decreases in reserves are to be reported as appropriations to or from reserves. Reserves are part of municipal equity on the balance sheet. Interest accrued for each reserve fund be recognized monthly. Establishment of new reserves and reserve transaction must be supported by resolution of council. So now, the legislative authority is there, council's responsibility is outlined, the chief administrative officer's responsibility is outlined, and we're on, the department head responsibilities is outlined, and we're at the definitions. And so the difference between the reserves and the reserve funds is that, the major difference is that the reserve funds are segregated funds, which means they're separated from the general working funds. So we have a number of them. Now, I'm going to just go to the top of page thirty-seven, because I'm, that's the first place where I run into difficulty. Category A, it says, is asset replacement. And then it says, established in order to smooth the spikes in operating budgets and smooth out property tax changes. That's not asset replacement. So how, how is that congruent? And where do, where do these category A, Bs, and Cs, and E, where do they fit into the actual reserves that I see in front of me here on page thirty-three? Like which, which ones of these reserves on page thirty-three would be category A or B or C or D?
It's indicated in the chart.
May I pardon?
They're shown further on.
Show me where.
Okay, we'll take, go to, go to page thirty-eight, for instance.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, it says the policy for reserves, then under it says schedule of reserves, reserve funds, and there's a category.
Yeah.
And that's where, that's where the A, B, C, D fit in.
Okay, so category, so if I look at the first one, the administration fund, uh, that's a category A fund, which I'm told is an asset replacement fund. Treasurer want to weigh in here and help me out?
Sure. So I think you're, um, with all due, due respect, I think you're taking the words within the category A to mean something like it's about operating budgets, but what, uh, the reserve itself is money set aside so that if we have to replace an asset, it helps to, um, we have that money to pull instead of taxing. We, we can smooth the budgets and property tax changes by using reserve money instead of taxing for it in, in future years. So category A is, is asset replacement, that's just what it is. The wording af- after that is just, I, I could probably rephrase it, it was in the same, the, the, nothing here has been changed from the previous policy.
No, 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 I know, but now we're reviewing the policy.
Well, you reviewed it in two thousand and fifteen as well.
I know what, listen, I got a good memory, but I don't go back that far.
The same wording was in the two thousand and fifteen policy. If you wish to have more different wording, by all means provides, you know, direction with respect to that, but the idea is that A is asset replacement, B is, uh, uh, projects, C is economic stability, D is a contingency reserve, E is a working funds reserve, and the categories are applied in the chart to show each of the reserves and their purpose based on the type of.
Okay, so then, uh, so if I look at the words though, established in order to smooth the spikes in operating budgets, and I know how we've used that fund, for example, for the policing, and we've used it to, to straight, to.
But it's not an asset replacement, it would be, uh, an economic stability reserve likely, the policing reserve.
Established to buffer against significant fluctuations in the economy.
Yes. C is, C is a, is the, is that, um, is the type of, uh, sti- economic stability, because that's something outside of our, uh, realm of understa- like of what we can control.
Cool.
So policing, for instance, there's economic, um, impacts to the policing budget that we can't control. So we have that reserve as a, as an economic stability reserve, just in case the policing budget becomes too much for our taxpayers and we can draw on that reserve.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a category C.
So when you get into fire department vehicles, that's an A, that's strictly an asset replacement, I can understand that.
Yeah.
Cemeteries is an A.
It's an A. For the most part, if I'm doing something out of a reserve for cemeteries, it's going to be more than operating costs. I'm not going to pull money from that reserve unless it's something like we have to do major, uh, fencing for, uh, something of in capital in nature. We won't use it for operating, we build in a ro- operating expenditure within our budget for maintenance of cemeteries.
Okay. All right, so moving on, how do we want to deal with this here tonight? Uh, one of the, one of the issues that I come to is that even though we've gone through this, as the Treasurer said a number of times, we still haven't come to a methodology for identifying our upper and lower limits, have we?
No. In the previous, uh, policy, we only showed upper limits, and I'm suggesting that maybe a, a lower limit is something we should look at, the council needs to look at to determine, uh, what level do they feel comfortable that we don't draw that reserve down lower?
Okay, and how would we, how would we deal with that in the context of tonight's meeting?
Uh, if you want to look at each of the reserves and determine if there's a lower, I suggested some lowers, basically twenty-five percent of the operating expenditures, um, and I know that sounds like it's, um, leading towards operating expenses again, but it's really trying to find a measurement. So, you know, if we have, um, operating expenses in, in administratin', in administration of seven hundred thousand, then twenty-five percent of that, like we, it's a, it's just a measurement.
Okay, so let's go over to the first one. Let's, I, I want to see how we can work this tonight so that we do our, our job that's in front of us.
Okay.
So if we look at the administration one, um, establish, so first of all, as we started two thousand and twenty, it was at one forty-seven, I got this number in front of me here, it was at one forty-seven as we started two thousand and twenty, and we're going to put forty-four into it, and theoretically, at the end of the year, it'll come out at one ninety-one. That'll be the balance. Now, this, this, this wording that says lower limit, twenty-five percent of the annual operating expenditures, that's new wording?
That is new wording.
Okay, so I didn't realize that.
Yeah, anything that's respective to lower, we never had lowering before.
Okay, so now if we go to that wording, what, what would, I mean, I don't, I don't have an amount in my head, uh, can you put a bracket there that shows it's this many dollars in two thousand and twenty?
Well, I, I could, but if this policy is to span over five years, it wouldn't make sense to have a, a finite number. If we, if we, you know, in five years from now, if, if we.
Just as an example.
Well, I suppose we could put an example of that, but if, if it's a policy that has to span at least five years, that number would be.
Would change.
Would change.
I understand that, but it's, go ahead.
I, I think, I think just so that we understand what number, the lower number would, would be.
Look like.
We get that the num- the higher number's two hundred and fifty thousand, but I think, you know, what he's struggling to say is that, that what, what, what exactly is the lower number?
Right.
Right? We know that it's going to change, we know that it's going to be maybe one forty-seven this year, one fifty-two next year, but just for, so that we would understand what twenty-five percent is, what, what exact, like what the number is, instead of it just being a percentage.
Yeah.
Fair.
I'm just using best practice, and that was one of the.
Well, how would you judge it, the amount?
Well, I would, uh, I think you're trying to generalize, there's a lot of items on here, okay? And some of them are hard things, like trucks and, and furniture and stuff like that. Other things are replacement of, say, buildings and roads and that kind of thing over the long periods of time. So I don't know if you can generalize that kind of a universe. So I don't know if you can generalize that kind of a universe was twenty-five percent of the operating. I think, in an ideal world, I think you would look at each of these reserve funds, and you would say, because we're dealing with a probability situation here, okay? What... You would wanna try and define what would be the likelihood of having to draw this fund down to a point where you were in the danger level. And that means an analysis of almost each line here and saying, what do we wanna maintain this at? Very minimum. And then, if, because of inflation and other things that go on in the future, we have to build, continue to build a little bit.
But when this fund was originally set up, the purpose of this reserve is to set aside funds to be used for upgrades to the township hall and replacing administrative equipment. And I've always conceived of this fund as us trying to accumulate enough dollars to refinish our second floor. That's the way I've always conceptualized it. Whether that's right or wrong, I don't know. But at an upper level of two hundred and fifty thousand, it sure as heck wouldn't go very far towards replacing this building, for example. So... That's why I don't know exactly how to approach this.
It's sort of philosophical issue. How much you wanna have, like... I think you can say, well, if a nuclear event occurred and we had to live for one year with no money, you know, how much would you need, type of thing, you know? Well, we're probably covering, okay, we'll get it for the most part, but... I don't know. I just think, I don't think you can get into these arbitrary things, and then... Because what happens is they become policy. And then, down the road, other councils say, well, we gotta put twenty-five percent of our operating thing into that reserve.
That's not what it's saying.
They don't think about it.
That's not what it's saying.
So realistic, if I may, right, when this was established in two thousand and eleven, this fund, the administrative one, it had actually zero dollars in it.
Yep.
And what we said is that each year, we would put at least a minimum of ten thousand in the annual budget. So, when we're developing that annual budget, from a staff perspective, we're including at least ten thousand dollars into that budget. Because that's really the direction of this policy to grow.
Yep.
You're one hundred percent correct that maybe the upper... When you're starting at zero, and we have an upper limit of two hundred and fifty thousand, and we're only putting ten thousand away, it's a long time to really reach two hundred and fifty thousand. But the reality is that if we have a bigger vision, maybe that upper limit needs to be increased to five hundred thousand.
And conversely, some funds may be putting ten in. You could say, well, we only really need to put eight in, or eight, five.
Correct, or five thousand.
What I'm getting at is, how do you arrive at the logic that leads you to that conclusion? And, I mean, you can grab a number out of the air, but on the other hand...
Mr. Robertson wants in. He's gonna answer your question.
Well, I was looking at, Chris, this is the planning reserve. We put in five thousand every year for six years, or whatever, and then the new zoning or the new planning document is developed. And it'll be down to zero. So, you know, you get crazy situations in there like that, too.
I mean, yeah, some of them, some of them, you can get by with minimal discussion.
Yeah.
But others, the...
Maybe a starting point is to have staff that suggest which funds they're uncomfortable with in terms of, you know, what our contribution is.
Well, not all of them, is it?
Well, I think, I think what I'm trying to attempt to do is to put this policy in council's hands, because this is where council has the authority or the control over what happens in future budgets and with the reserves. The twenty-five percent came from that, at minimum, we need to keep our reserves at twenty-five percent. You know, we don't wanna drop below twenty-five percent of operating. That's a measure that the auditors are telling us every year. So if we do it, if we make sure that at least the lower limit of every capital reserve, the A, category A, is at twenty-five percent, then, you know, the other... Of the operating, then we're gonna meet that measurement that the auditors would prefer us to not go below. You know, and it doesn't meet, you know, that's where that twenty-five percent is coming from. And the individual annual contributions is definitely, you know, a way... At minimum, what are we going... What is council comfortable with making sure that that gets in the budget, and we don't budge from that? So, you know... And you still have, within budget, when we discuss budget, those are still discussions we have. Sometimes, this year, we said, oh, we need to actually... We're gonna put seventy thousand dollars more into the fire equipment because we're gonna buy another truck next year or something. And so, we have our minimums in there. But like I say, the twenty-five percent came from where the auditors are suggesting we don't go under that level.
Okay, so I still end up with the concept problem, because I don't know what the annual operating expenditures are, so I can't in my head picture what the number is. And so that's what I'm looking for. And I mean, I know it's gonna change every year, but if I had a set of brackets that said, "Example, twenty twenty is seventy-five thousand," then I would say, okay, I understand where that's coming from now. I need to keep somewhere in the neighborhood of this and not go below it. And then, the upper limit, that's fine, I can say two hundred and fifty, but maybe it should be five hundred.
Maybe so.
And we can have a discussion.
Yeah. I think at budget time, we would be bringing this policy with us as a budget discussion item. And if there was at some point where, and staff is gonna look and say, "We're not going to draw that reserve down under a certain value, and we'll know what the operating value is for that year." And so, we're guided by the fact that, as staff, we don't present you with a budget that puts us in that under twenty-five percent, whatever year it is, between now and next five years. So at each year, when we're showing you the operating budget, that's the number we're gonna know. We can't be dropping it below that lover, that number, in that year.
Okay, so the rationale makes sense. I just need a number so I can see the picture.
So if I could make a recommendation, then why don't we have another look at this so that we can move on? Why don't we have another look at this again next month with some of those numbers that we're asking, like that suggested bottom-line number for each one, so that we have, you know, a better understanding of exactly what number, what number we're gonna do? Because otherwise, we're gonna go through every single one of these, and we're gonna end up in the same spot we are right now with the first item, going, I don't understand it because I don't know what the number of the operating expense number is. Why don't we look at it again next month with those numbers so we have a better understanding of what those numbers are?
We have a long agenda, and it's eight-thirty. I think that's a great idea.
Before we do that, I'm gonna ask the, through the chair or the treasurer, another question. Do we have any of these where we're not contributing twenty-five percent? Like you say, the auditor points...
You're confusing the twenty-five percent. Because we're not contributing twenty-five percent. That's our limit. Our policy is...
To not let them go below.
Right. One area that, if you want, for instance, in the recreation reserve, we're not to, in this policy, said forty thousand or less. Nothing less than forty thousand. We're now just at forty thousand. But before, we were barely putting forty thousand in. But now, with the Augustus fifteen, plus the twenty-five we've been putting in, now we're keeping that, that measure in the budget, in the policy.
Good, thank you. Okay, so the deputy mayor has made a suggestion here. The chair thinks it's a great idea. Does anybody have any objections to bringing this forward again at another meeting?
Well, I was just going to comment on that deputy mayor mentioned next meeting. Do we have to be that easy?
Well, the next meeting's a month away, yeah. And the big thing is, and my point, is that we're not very far from getting into budgeting here.
That's correct.
And I'd like to, I think we should get this review of this policy completed before we get into budget. And, you know what? I can see that this is, I mean, I love working with this kind of stuff. I can see this as almost an hour-long session here. Okay. I'm not hearing anybody disagree with the idea of postponing this discussion. All these pages are marked draft. You can see that why they're marked draft. The staff is looking for input here. I'm about to follow up on the deputy mayor's suggestion and move on in the agenda and come back to this in September.
I agree.
Yep?
I agree with moving on with it. The one thing that we're talking to, and be everybody wanting to know what the twenty-five percent is, is, I'm not... I don't think we can go by twenty-five percent in one year. I think we needed a five-year average left was of that operating, what the twenty-five percent is. And I'm more interested in seeing the difference between where that reserve is now and where we were at our lower limits where we should be. Above it or below.
Okay, so what...
And when it comes to budget time, we know how much money we really should be thinking about trying to get that particular reserve up.
Well, one thing that I did, I thought was, you know, it helped me out, is I took the reserve and the reserve fund sheet that Melmy provided with dates as of July the thirty-first, and I wrote them in on all these, on all these columns. What it was at the beginning of the year, how much we were gonna put in, and what it would be at the end of the year. And then I related it back to what the upper and lower limit was. And I could relate it very easily to the upper limit, because that's the number. And I could see, for example, if I looked at Recreation Reserve, the upper limit is six hundred thousand. But at the end of this year, it'll only be at two hundred thousand. So we got a long way to go to reach that upper limit. And the lower limit, I don't know what the number is. Maybe the one ninety-nine is below the twenty-five percent. I don't know that.
I think you know what that lower limit is.
Yeah? Go ahead.
Just a question, and I know we've had this one before, but to Mel, John, or councillor Hunter just hit on a good thing, and it's, we always see like the twenty nineteen document, like on the reserve one that the mayor's talking about, right? Like, it goes back that one year. But when we're talking through the budget process, they always use, you know, several years, several years back. A good point is, you know, it might help us to even see those, you know, those other numbers so that we can see, you know, three or four years back versus just the one year back. That makes sense? Yeah, just so we can sort of see that general trend?
So through the chair, just so that staff is clear, we will bring this policy back at the next amendment in finance. And what we will have is not included in this policy as per se, but we will have a chart that indicates, like, for twenty twenty, the twenty-five percent of the lower, for the lower limit, twenty-five percent of the annual operating expenditure in administration was X. Right? Your current reserve in the administration is this, right?
Yeah. Well, this is now. So you're gonna give me that on a separate sheet?
Well, so the reason is that we would not want to put... I would not think you would want to put the lower limit as a physical number in the policy for the five years.
It's a draft. Put it in, we'll read the draft, and before the draft becomes policy, you can take it out.
Well, I guess, we can certainly do that. I was looking at a chart that sort of went through everything so you'd have it right in front of you on one page.
Well, I got it. The point is, if I look at this sheet here that I've got with all of the ones listed...
What's picking on, Mr. Mayor?
Hey? So I'm looking at page forty of seventy-seven. I'm just arbitrarily picking one. Like winter control, like picking that arbitrarily.
Correct.
I know that it was, because I went back to this sheet.
Yes.
And I know that it was twenty thousand dollars at the beginning of the year. I know that we're gonna put in, we've budgeted to put in forty, take nothing out. So at the end of this year, it should be sixty. Now, what I don't know is that it says it should be fifty percent of the annual winter operating budget. I assume that that means twenty, fifty percent of the annual winter control operating budget. I think there's a word missing there. What is that number? I don't know that number. Am I below, at my sixty grand? Am I below that fifty percent of the annual winter control operating budget? Or I'm above it? And there's no upper limit. What should the upper limit be? I need a suggestion to tell, somebody to tell me what that upper limit should be and a rationale for it.
So through the chair, I think we're talking about the same thing. The only difference is, what I'm suggesting is, instead of you flipping back to the reserve and reserve fund page, to have it all on one chart that just goes right across.
Well, if you can do that, it would be nice.
Well, I think it needs to be, is what I'm hearing. So we will work to try to capture that for September.
Oh, which means we see a different format again.
It'll work. It'll work.
Okay.
Through the chair, I expect that you'll be quite excited with the chart.
All right, so I'm getting ready to move on here.
If you're not, I'm waiting for that.
I'm still... Oh, my goodness. All right, so now I'm at item number seven H. Can hardly wait till September. Cardinal Water and Industrial Park Distribution System Financial Plan. Now this one's gone. Okay, so, help me through this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to turn this over to Treasurer Melanie to kind of walk you through the updated draft water financial plan.
So, again, this plan, the draft version, is basically a replication of the previous plan, only just now we're looking at capital and operating expenditures from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-seven. The basis is that we're looking at between a one- and two-percent increase in revenues each year to cover base, to cover an indexing of some expenditures. And we've plotted any of the capital that is required within those years in order to try to figure out how we'll fund those capitals. The Cardinal system has certainly more capital projects to do over that same, that seven-year, six- or seven-year plant timeframe. The industrial park only has the one capital project that has to be done in that timeframe. The one thing we're hoping to put in is a capital levy in the Cardinal system. That was brought up by council previously. So we're looking at putting between a five- and ten-dollar capital levy per month, per unit. And with the industrial park, we're hoping to actually do a rate study to change the current rate structure. Right now, the rate structure's pretty confusing to a user, as well, it's very complicated to bill. The Edwardsburg Park has a base rate of forty-six thirty-two, which includes six cubic meters. So we'd like to change the system to replicate kind of the same as what the Cardinal system is, is that there's a base rate, and that it's consumption. There's no six cubic built into the base rate. It just gets very confusing. So there's more work to be done on the actual, you know, rates. The other thing in the art, in the industrial park, is the, doesn't matter whether you're residential or a commercial or industrial, that forty-six thirty-two is your base rate, which is not congruent with what we have in Cardinal. In Cardinal, we have a five-eighths, which is at twenty... In Cardinal, we have a 5/8ths, which is at $24 and something. And then we have a 1-inch at 70-some dollars per month. And then a larger pipe charge of a 2-inch to, I think it's like 200 and some. We'd like to do the same in the Edwardsburg system, because basically that's where the impact on the system is, the larger pipe size. So we want to kind of move the money, or have, have the impact on the system being paid by the, by the users that are actually doing that.
Okay.
So there's a lot in the, in the plan. What I'd like to do is put the plan on the website, you know, and a little bit more information on the website for users to review and have comment back, as well as, as see what Council has to say.
Problem is, I think there's so many unanswered questions. I'm going to call it hold, but I call it unanswered questions. So let, let's get some discussion going, Councilor Cameron.
Yes, now to the, through the chair, to the Treasurer. On page 56, and your comment was you want to take the Edwardsburg Industrial Park, which is 4632, and make it the same as Cardinal, which is 24 to 25.
Yeah.
What?
I'm, why?
For a residential.
Residential.
Yeah, but in the industrial park, what is residential?
Well, the industrial park system also serves New Wexford.
Right.
So the New Wexford residents are, are, as part of that system.
So.
Yeah, but what's the residential rate then?
The residential rate is the same as the industrial rate in, in the Edwardsburg. Everybody starts with a $46.32. There is no differential.
But that $46 will remain on the industrial rate? But the residents will pay, will pay the Cardinal rate? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
I want to try to replicate the same rate structure as Cardinal.
For, for industry as well as residential?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, that, that's very unfair.
So, 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 so if I may, the, the, the structure of the, of the Cardinal system, the base rate structure is based on the meter size. So if you have a bigger meter, you pay a bigger base rate. That is completely fair, and that's exactly what we're trying to do with the Edwardsburg Industrial Park.
Well, hang on a second.
Where the, where the unfairness comes in, businesses, and I'm, I'm, I'm not talking residential, well, I'm sort of talking residential, but businesses, they have the opportunity of write-off. The residents don't. You pay it, you're stuck with it. Where industry can use and use and use and use and still have the write-off privilege against their, against their, their.
This, this new rate structure is, it will help to reduce the amount of money that residential users are on the system.
Yes.
I'm all, I'm all for that.
Okay.
I just have, you just have to show me.
Yep.
But, but you're, but you're, I mean, I've got so many questions here that, that I, I'm really uncomfortable with this, I'm going to tell you. I'm looking at Table 4.1 on page 56.
Correct.
Residential base rate is 2422 for 18, 19, and then I see for 25 is 2544. That's a base. And then a consumption rate is $2 per cubic meter under 20 cubic meters and $3 per cubic meter over 20 cubic meters.
Correct.
All right, so we have a system which makes that work. Am I correct?
Correct.
Are we proposing to change that system?
Not in Cardinal, no.
Not in Cardinal?
No.
No.
All right, so now tell me what the Edwardsburg Park, Edwardsburg Industrial Park looks like. It's got a base amount in 2018, 2019, and 2020. It's 772 per cubic meter over six cubic meters. It says prorated, I don't know what that means.
So.
Very complicated.
So, so in, 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 in all fairness, that, that, that's part of the problem with, with the current rate structure, is that it, it's on an old system. For the first 1,400 cubic meters, it was based on a prorated system. And then any, anything in excess of that 1,400, you, you pay a different rate. So it's, as, as.
So what does prorated mean in that context? It has no sense. I'm either paying 772 per cubic meter over six cubic meters or I'm not.
And you, you, you are up to your portion of 1,400 cubic meters.
Up, up to what?
Up to 1,400 cubic meters.
Your portion or percentage of?
Your portion of. That's what I mean. It's, it, it, it's, it's, it's not a simple system. What we're trying to do is simplify the system.
So what are you proposing that happens to the Edwardsburg Industrial Park rate?
It would go very similar to the Cardinal rate.
Show me the schedule. Where is it? All I got now is, is two charts underneath me. I don't have a 21, I don't have three more numbers for 2021, 2022, and 2023.
So, so in all fairness, through the chair, we, we, we wouldn't know what they are?
Well, you would know what, well, they're only rates.
We need to.
What are your recommended rates? What are your recommended base and what's your recommended, what's your recommended replacement once I go down below 2020? I don't know where you're coming from. I got a chart underneath me here that says Edwardsburg Industrial Park, New Wexford Water Rate, Water Bill per year, based on, now it says 15 cubic meters per month. Now, where did all of a sudden 15 cubic meters per month come from? And what's that got to do with Cardinal? Says Cardinal Water Bill per year based on 15 cubic meters per month, but you tell me up above in 2018, 2019, and 2020, that the system works the way you got it set up?
Yes, so, so, so I mean, naturally, if you use 15 cubic meters a month in, in, in the Cardinal system in 2019, you would, you would have been billed for 5/8ths, $659.28 for the year. And if you used 15 cubic meters a month in, in the Cardinal system for 2020, for 2020, you would be billed $665.28.
Okay, so now what changes in 2021? And you're jumping me, my residential me?
Yep.
From 665 to 738?
Correct, because, because we're looking at a capital levy of $5 a month.
That doesn't say any place.
So, in, in, in all, in all fairness, this, this is a seven-year, very high-level plan.
It ain't too high-level when I get my 2021 bill.
So, so, so first of all, you haven't set your budget for 2021. That's, that's done annually. This is a high-level framework. So we talked about in 2021, in January, instituting a $5 a month capital levy. So we took that and we added that to your, plus the 1% rate charge, and that's where you got your $738.59.
That's what the $5 a month levy did to me?
That's what the $5 a month levy did to you. So it's, so it's $60 plus a 1% increase.
Say that again?
So five, 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 five dollars times the, the 12 months, you're, you're looking at $60.
Yeah, $60.
$60 increase.
That's your, close to the 7, the 720 right off the bat, and the other 18 bucks.
Yeah.
These are, yes, you're 1%.
Correct. But see, I don't, I guess what I'm saying is, I've got to compare the chart here going beyond, well, it, it takes me back to 19 and takes me up to 2027. I've got to compare that with, with the rate set out up above that. I don't know how to, I just don't know how to, I don't know how to deal with it.
Why wouldn't the residential at Edwardsburg bottom? Why wouldn't the residential rate from 2021 to 27 be the same as the residential rating card?
It can't be specific because of the economies of scale. There's not enough users on that system to make it completely even. But the effort in this rate structure is to try to get it comparable. We have to buy the water from Prescott. So as a result of that, there's a built-in amount of money that we have to cover. So it, it won't ever be the same as Cardinal, but we were trying to get it more in line with a Cardinal user.
I know, but when you look at, at the Edwardsburg Industrial Park and you look at residential, and I'm talking about 5/8ths inch there, you were at 882 in 2019, 882.36 in 2020, and then it dropped to 750. I think that's a big mistake. You, you dropped the residential rate. And now I've seen, realized that the commercial goes back. The commercial seems to go up. Commercial 1 and 1/2 inch, the commercial 4-inch goes up. But look at the increase in the commercial 4-inch from 882 to 3,000. I mean, I, I have a bit of problem with that. I mean, I know the guys, the commercial guys can write it off. I understand that.
And it's a 4-inch pipe, so they're sucking back a lot, a lot of water.
And I understand that, but I don't think it's a good idea to reduce the residential from 882 to 750. And then you slowly walk it back up to 888, 844 in seven years.
But there is a unique situation in New Wexford, Mr. Mayor, and that is that if you leave it at 882, I don't think you're going to get many more new users of the water, because many places have wells as well as water, and a lot of them are using wells.
In what, in New Wexford?
Yes.
Well, that's a mistake. I'm surprised that we haven't bylawed them into mandatory usage.
There are some wells still being activated.
Do you know anybody in, in, in struggle in New Hopes, I think, don't, not go have any trouble getting the Valcana water system for even $882 a year, year water bill?
Nope.
You're going to pay $25,000 to go well drills.
Yeah, yeah.
Your interest on your well is going to pay your water bill.
I mean, if the whole objective here is to, and I understand it, I mean, we've got to cover our operating costs and as well as build our reserves, I mean, hang on to the money that you've got in your hand. The, the, it's 882, you got it in your hand, hang on to it. I don't know, I, I'm going back with another problem that I had on page 52 and page 53 with these charts. I mean, I just pointed out to you a, a major flaw in your chart. What are your units on your right, on your left-hand margin?
On page 50, on 52?
Yeah.
Well, the, the, on, on the left-hand, sure.
Yeah.
They're dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I realize that.
Yeah.
But I didn't, I didn't see that on the chart. Now, I'm looking at the blue line. And the blue line touches the $500,000 line. When does it touch the $500,000 line?
In 2018.
When in 2018?
It's always year-end balances.
So does the little ticks at the bottom represent the halfway point of the year or the end point of the year? Because I, I take those little ticks and I extend them up to the blue line, and I don't know what point of the year I'm at.
If it would help.
I can't see how it can change during the year.
If it would help Council or Committee, I can put data points on the line.
No, but here's the point. The water reserve balance does not change during the year.
No, it doesn't.
Correct, so.
It's always year-end balances that are reflected on here.
Yeah, and all we do is join them on a, and, and make a flow line.
Yes, that's what I meant.
It's not really a, it's not really a flow line, it's a.
So would you, would, so through the chair, would, would you prefer like a bar graph?
No, I, I'd prefer to see a, a set of numbers in front of me in a, in a chart form. And, but that's a small point, but just because I have trouble when I see these graphs, they look so pretty, but when you try to make sense out of them, they don't make a lot of sense. So what do you, what, how do you want to proceed here? I mean, we've got two things happening. We're trying to, I realize what the CIO is telling me. We're trying to present a high-level picture of what these, what this thing is going to look like. But I can't. Really what we want to do is change the residential and make it more simpler in Edwardsburg, to go along with the.
So, 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 so through, so, so through the chair, yes, but that, but, 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 but that is, that, that is a discussion for the, the fall, that we'll have to go through further discussions in changing the bylaw.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay? What we're, what we're just showing you is that if, if we go about and look at trying to, to duplicate sort of, sort of the structure of the Cardinal system, this is, this is how it's going to adjust, and, and you're, you're going to balance that out.
Yeah.
Those, those systems. But it's really, it's really a high-level look at, at that, the next six years. So I'm, I'm going to revert back to the November 15 plan that we submitted, okay? Almost identical, other than the capital projects. And, you know, give, give or take a little bit with respect to, to what we were looking at in revenue. And what actually ended up happening was that we completed every capital project on, on our list with the exception of County Road 2, which we knew if we didn't get funding, we weren't, you know, we, we were not able to do that. So remember that this is a very high-level review that we say, oh, we've, we've got six capital projects, we, we, we better make sure that our revenue structure will sustain, will be able to do those projects.
So show me where this, this, this report tells me that.
Where the, the.
5.1, and then 5.2 shows your projected revenues.
So page 59 of 77.
Show me, show me what? I see projected revenues for the Cardinal Water System.
Yep.
I got a. And I see projected revenues for the Edwardsburg Industrial Park Distribution System.
Correct.
They show that the revenues are increasing each year. That's basically all I get out of it. I've got no numbers, because I don't see any numbers. I see a, I see a, I see a, a left-hand margin. I guess it's, you're telling me it's dollars, but anyway, so, you know, okay, so the revenues are increasing. I don't know why, but anyway, they're increasing. Now I got, now I'm going to look at the expense side of things.
Sure.
There's no numbers here for 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27. There's no revenue numbers.
So, so through, 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 through the chair, are, are you, are you, is, is the major concern that you don't have an actual dollar number, that you don't like the fact that it's, that, that, that it's a chart that shows you a rough number?
Well, okay, let's, so, let's answer that by going back to, let's answer that by going back to, what page is it on? Page 65. Now, can I tie page 65 in with that chart in any way, shape, or form? They're both Cardinal Water Systems. Cash and cash equivalents, 812. I don't know where that 812 came from. But it has no relation to what I'm seeing on the chart on page 59. Cash and cash equivalents, 812. Theoretically, I would have a cash and a cash equivalent flow from the previous years and maybe a balance that came forward, but I don't see that. Gross financial, financial assets, 612. Liabilities, now, this is. Now, this is supposed to be a financial position. So I'm getting net financial assets, and then I'm getting non-financial assets. And those numbers, I have no idea where they came from. I can't, I can't read any of this. I can see that. Go to page 62. Mr. Brown, help me out here, Mr. Roberts. Operating cash flow. The operating cash flow equation is as follows. Operating cash flow is equal to revenues minus operating expenses minus debt service. I'm not familiar with that equation.
Yeah, NMB, revenues minus debt and other, you know, liability issues that. I mean, your cash flow is what you get left over after you paid all your obligations, you know, to service your operations.
Cash flow is what you have left over.
Well, I mean, if you've got revenue of $1,000, and you've got a debt of, I mean, debts and so on, you can separate them out. Your operating cash flow is what's left from that revenue stream. An operation pays salaries, utilities, et cetera, et cetera. You deserve a mortgage. You've got a $1,000 income, you've got a mortgage of 500 bucks, you've got operating cash flow of 500 bucks.
So how do we deal with this here?
Do we just submit this thing to the government?
Yeah. You know, I suppose the good thing is that nobody looks at them, but that's not a good thing.
Well, you know, through, through the chair, with all, with all due respect, this is, this is a pretty good financial plan that shows that all of our efforts for a number of years that we're starting to see by the capital projects that we're doing, that we're building up some reserves, that we're doing a lot of good things. I get it that there might be some criticism that, I apologize that we didn't have a dollar sign and little things like that. And if the feeling is that the comfort level of committee and council would be actual numbers, we'll see if we can't put actual numbers on top of those charts and do things like that to fine-tune it. But the overall picture says in that six-year period, we're going, we're going to be in a positive position with what we're roughly proposing. But then over that six-year period, we're going to, each year, we're going to go over in detail our operating and our capital budgets. So may, maybe we do a rate increase of 3% instead of 1%. Maybe we do, maybe we don't do a 5% or a $5 capital levy. Maybe two years from now, we do a $10 capital levy. There's still that flexibility, but mainly looking at it from the overall picture, saying that you have a million dollars' worth of work. Are you going to have a million dollars' worth of energy? And if you're not, how are you going, how are you going to do it? Or what are you going to do? So this gives you an overall picture that sort of says we can, by doing a 1% or 2% rate increase every year, by doing a 5% or a $5 capital levy for the first couple of years, and then bumping it up to a $10 capital levy, because that's just the time when we're going to do a big chunk of County Road 2. But if we, if we, if we happen to be successful with the ICIP application, you know, council can completely change and not do that capital levy increase.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all. See, I'm looking at it from the point of view of, if you're trying to put a financial plan in place, you're trying to work with the numbers. Now, I know that they require us to do what they call full-cost accounting, I understand that. But there's two, there's cash flow, and then there's amortization, which is not cash flow. It's a different cap. So if I just take it from the point of view of cash flow, I look at my revenues each year. I subtract my operating expenses. The difference is X, and I contribute X of that amount to capital. Now, what I've got left with, what I've got left now is a contribution to a reserve. That's all cash flow. And now I've got a reserve that's at a certain amount. And I go through that for the six years. And I see where my reserve is at the end of that six-year period. Now, if you want to take another look at it, you go back to what is your amortization. And you say, okay, in my first year, what was my amortization? And what was my contribution to amortization, or however you want to do it? But I can't, I can't read any of that in this plan. I can't read how it fits together. And I'm looking at page 65, and I'm trying to figure out where these numbers came from. I went to page 66, and I tried to figure out where those numbers come from. And I can see annual surplus at the beginning of the year, annual surplus at the beginning of the period, annual surplus at the end of the period. This, this chart on page 66. Where did the, just start with the revenue, where did the 592 come from? It's Cardinal water system.
That's all your billing. That's the amount of revenue we're going to collect from billing the users.
Okay, so if I look at, back at the chart on page 59, you're saying that that chart is telling me that that revenue for 2021 should be about 592? Pretty close to 600. All right, so walk me down. So I've got operating expenses of 416. I've got amortization, which is not cash flow, but let's just take it as amortization for a minute. Are we subtracting that 199 from the operating expenses, or are we adding it to the operating expenses?
So you're, you're adding the amortization to the operating expenses.
Okay, and then that's giving me 616 of total expenses, including amortization.
Correct.
Correct.
All right. So now I've got an annual surplus in there of 23,000.
Deficit.
You've got a deficit of 23,000.
A deficit, sorry. You've got a deficit of 23,000. Now, where did this number come from? Accumulated surplus at the beginning of the period, $5 million?
That's your tangible capital assets. So it would be your net value of tangible capital assets plus any cash that you have sitting in your reserve.
Okay, so, but when I look at that annual surplus at the beginning of the period, that's my net capital assets. It's not cash.
It's an accumulated surplus, and that is always, assets are included in your surplus along with cash. It is not all cash.
All right. But my annual surplus, but my annual deficit above is a combination of cash and amortization.
Correct.
All right, now I'm going to subtract that 23, 723, from the accumulated surplus at the beginning of the period, and I'm going to end up with an accumulated surplus at the end of the period of 5132.
Correct.
Right, so I'm, so I'm, I'm combining cash with amortization, which is a non-cash issue, a non-cash item.
We have to, we have to show these statements in a non-cash position. We have to show PSAB-compliant statements. So these are reflective, the same as the auditors provide us with financials. The ministry will not look at something that doesn't have assets in it.
Okay, so fair enough. That's the way they want to see it. But it doesn't tell me where my cash is. It tells me an overall picture of my cash and my tangibles, if I can put it that way. But it doesn't tell me where my cash is. What's my cash position? If I go back to that same, I go back to that same column, my cash is 592 of revenue less 416 of operating expenses. The difference is cash.
Mm-hmm. It would have increased your reserve.
But there's no, there's nothing, there's, there's no, in that, in that column, there's nothing that relates to my capital expenditures. Operating expenses are just operating expenses. They don't, they don't reflect any kind of a, of a capital contribution or a contribution to capital.
You don't reflect that in the statement of operations. You reflect that in a statement of cash flow.
Gets reflected in a statement of cash flow. Where's that? Over the next page.
Appendix A3 shows your capital expenditures.
All right, I get revenue of six, Cardinal water system again, 2021. Now I've got revenue of 608. Not 50, not 592. So where did 608 come from? You see what I mean when I'm saying I can't read it? That 608 would be the 1%, wouldn't it?
No.
Of the 592, no?
No. As soon as we start getting into adding cash flow, there are areas where we're either, we're drawing reserve money to pay for capital, or we've got grant money coming for capital. So it, the other one was just the basic revenues minus expenditures for operating. That's your operating, your statement of operations. Revenue without any capital involved. I know it has amortization because with PSAB, we have to put amortization in there. It's considered an expense, but we don't actually expend it. So it still has to be shown as a statement of operations. When you get into a statement of cash flow, then your revenue is different because you're going to add in revenue to offset your capital. So the difference between your 608 and the 592 is, is some capital. Whether it's a draw from reserve, whether it's grant money that we receive, debenture money that we might use. That's why it won't match, because the statement of cash flow is, is different revenues. Statement of operations, you're not dealing with capital. Statement of cash flow, you incorporate your capital. So there's other revenues that are incorporated in the cash flow.
Okay, so here's a question, because this is getting over my head. Do our auditors look at this? Can they give us a recommendation on this?
The auditors have never looked at this, but they could certainly.
I can't make sense of it. I need somebody to make sense of it for me.
If, 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 if committee would like the auditors to take, to take a look at the, at the water financial plan, we can, we can have the auditors take a look at the financial plans.
I think I'd feel more comfortable if, if we could say that this financial plan has been reviewed by a municipal. Gives us a third-party endorsement.
Thanks for confidence.
Would you put this up on the website?
No, I wouldn't be comfortable. If I can't read.
Anybody will understand it?
No.
No.
Well, okay.
I'm talking about the general public here.
No, 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 that's, that's what's worrying me. Remember, once it goes up, I'm responsible for it. I got to answer the public. That's, that's what it means. Buck stops here, right here.
Does this format, is it sort of imposed upon us by the province or something?
These statements are imposed, that, that format is something that is.
Is imposed, yes. So why wouldn't we adopt, like even for us, why wouldn't we adopt a position of an executive summary, which explains the process that we plan to implement? And then backed up by the document, if you want to dive into the details, you've got the opportunity for that. This is a comprehensive document, very.
This is? Yeah, I, it's, and I make no bones about it, it's beyond my level.
I spent, you know, two, three hours over the weekend, different times, looking at stuff, but, you know, like I, my thought was like, that I can't sort all, you know, first of all, I'm not that intimately familiar with the system, but. I would, you know, an executive summary might have answered a lot of, sort of, allayed any kind of concern that we were handling the thing right.
Do you comment from around the table? Am I the only one that's opening up the field here?
No wonder we got a huge bureaucracy in Toronto. They're going to look at all these from all the municipalities.
I don't think they can. I don't think they look at it. Well, I guarantee you, when you apply for a grant, these, somebody goes through these things with a fine-tooth comb. Until you apply for a grant, they may not. But once you do, they're going to go through this with a fine-tooth comb.
Yeah, because this is your financial stuff.
Yeah. And you know what it's going to show? It's going to show that you don't need the grant, because you planned it so well.
Well, we did one of these in 215, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so we've had those applications for the upgrades in Cardinal, never get approved.
That's right.
So I wonder if our 15 plan is shooting ourselves in the foot or something.
Well, I mean.
I don't know. It's just a thought.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking at it. In six and a half years from now, our revenues are going to be up $100,000. So the rates, the rates obviously are going to bring in, bring in more money, but wow. There's only, I think, two of us sitting in this room that have to pay these.
We're 900 people, isn't there something?
Well, 700, you know. So anyway, anyway, I just, wow. I think, I think we need a little, a little more explanation.
A monologuery?
Well, I'd certainly, that, yes, I would, I would concur with that. At least it's, it's an independent. Well, we do have a recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I know we do. Well, I know we do. Chair's looking for a direction here. Mr. Counselor Hunter.
I think it's been a pretty high-level plan and it's pointed out, pretty well, well-formatted by what, the way it has to be put in. And you have to, if you don't show some increase in value along the way that you're trying to compensate for, for your deficit, you're definitely gonna be challenged. However, they look at now, or they look at, at when we operate, put in for the grant offer. Most of the shows we're trying to work, getting away from being, or amortization, that we're still not going on the whole. Where, what I say we're still going on the whole, we're not catching up with our amortization amount to go to what we want. I don't think any town should will. But to me, I think it's a pretty well-thought-out plan, the only question I have at all, it may, maybe in the Edinburgh Industrial Park that we, we, they're gonna get a shock when the rate jumps for commercial, but yet when you're, put it back to what the Cardinal rate is, the commercial rate there is almost the same as what is gonna end up for the Edinburgh Industrial Park. And we all know we pay half again as much for the water that we have to buy because we don't supply it ourselves and haven't got it under our control there. So, I don't really see much wrong with the plan myself, I think it's, it's gonna go up. I agree with you on the one statement, I don't really think we should, the rate should drop quite drastically for the, for the residential one, 'cause it actually puts it down to almost the same as what Cardinal is and we're paying a lot more for the water and a lot more for the service. So, I think that one level there maybe needs to be adjusted a little bit, but it's very aggressive plan. I think it's pretty well bang-on for, on you.
So what's your druthers here?
I moved the recommendation.
Uh, just a minute now, where's the recommendation?
Page forty-eight.
That's right back in page forty-eight.
Sixty-four.
Yeah, but that's a sit different recommendation. The recommendation that we're dealing with is the one on page forty-eight. Receive the attached draft updated financial plan for the Cardinal Water and the Edwardsburg Industrial Park Distribution Water System. And direct staff to notify the public and post a copy of the plan on the township website with a timeline for comment. And direct staff to bring the updated financial plan back to committee for final review in September. That's the recommendation.
Is that mandated? This recommendation's mandated also by the, by the province?
So, so through, through, through the chair, no, no, it's not mandated, I, I, I believe it's, it's a transparent way before we're submitting a financial plan. Like we, we, we will be required to post a final financial plan on our website for, for that six-year period.
Nobody understands it here, what's the public gonna do with it?
That's my worry.
Well, I think what we'd have to do is make sure we do everything in our power to reduce any kind of potential confusion that could arise.
How do you do that?
Well, I guess, uh, it's easy to say, but by clarity, you know, and, uh, if that means adding a dollar sign or dollar figures or whatever, you know, um, don't wanna mislead anybody.
Again, that's not what the ministry's asking for, they want it this format.
Say again?
How many do you think are actually gonna read about the statement?
Your comment. Your comment. Chair's looking for a direction here, gentlemen.
Oh, I think John, Councilor Hunter's already moved it and I'm, and I'm prepared to second it, so let's make us deal with it.
I'm gonna ask for recorded vote. And I'm gonna actually poll, poll members. And, uh, so it's recommending receive, direct staff to notify public and post a copy, and then staff to bring back the updated plan and committee for final review in September.
We may not get a lot of comments from people in Cardinal, but I'm sure there's gonna be people in the industrial park who are gonna be reading this and looking at, you know, somebody in their organizations, uh, corporate people are gonna be like, what's in here? How does it hit us and so on and so on. You see that big jump in the-
They won't have any trouble understanding it.
No, they won't.
No, no, why?
They'll know that, that any big jump is there and they're-
They'll, they'll understand that they-
He'll get a phone call.
Yeah, but I think most of them will understand they've been getting a pretty sweet deal for a long time too.
Well, eight hundred bucks a month's pretty good, yeah. For a year.
Okay, calling the vote here, Counselor Dilba, how do you vote?
Yay.
Counselor Cameron, how do you vote?
Yay.
Counselor, Mr. De, uh, Deputy Mayor Desha, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Hunter, how do you vote?
Yay.
Uh, Mr. Robertson, how do you vote?
Yay.
May Pardon?
Yay.
Mr. Bradley, how do you vote?
Yay.
Oh, that's great, so I can vote nay. That's just great, you guys saved me the problem. All right, I'll call a motion carried. Uh, now I wanna bring one other issue up, and I, I didn't, I left this issue out, uh, even though I should've maybe dealt with it at number two. I, I don't want this plan coming back without a, for me, I, I wanna see a, a comment from the auditors. They got a month to review it and give us a comment. We've reviewed the financial, the water plan and make a comment on it. Kind of a comment is all, so that I've got a third-party, I can rely on a third-party comment. So that's my druthers, that's my wishes, I'm going home and sleep. All right.
I think it's a great idea though.
Well, I think we need it, to tell you the truth. Okay, so now I'm at item number, I'm at item number-
I.
I think it's I, seven I, truck seven max force engine options update. Looking, Chair's looking for a direction, you gotta read the note in front of you. Chair's looking for a direction, comments. Floor's open for discussion, Deputy Mayor.
My only one was, well, I mean, yeah, uh, my only, I love, but I'm gonna keep most of them away. My only comment was, let me get there, I got it, it, it's to do with, um, with the warranty portion of the, uh, of the one from Rush. So it's, it says one year parts and labor, and then additional negotiated parts and labor. How is that different than a two-year parts and later? Is it just that we were able to negotiate in a, a second year or, uh, that was my only sort of point of clarification, I, it seems like it was written that way specifically for a reason, uh, not a two-year parts and labor.
Through, through, through the chair, Ford, did you wanna answer that?
Through the, through the chair, um, yeah, basically, it was, the original offer was one year and there was a negotiation afterwards, uh, was a verbal negotiation, so thus the email proving that they had made, made that extra year. Yes, so it's two-year, one way or the other.
And, one more question.
Go ahead.
Define remanufactured?
Um, remanufactured.
So it's not a new block, it's a, a block that's been re, re-boarded?
Yes, it would be rebuilt, so re, re-tooled.
It's not a new motor, it's a rebuilt?
They don't make that motor anymore.
Okay. Oh, one more. Transferable, transferable warranty?
That, I can't answer.
I need to know that before I can support it.
Didn't I see someplace, original owner only?
I think that might've been the service.
Okay, might've been, yeah.
I believe it was.
Yeah, it was service.
Yeah.
Peterbilt service, what is the, what is covered by warranty, only the original customer?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Uh, yes, just through the chair, just a, a question to the, uh, Operations Director. Looking at the Rush, at, at the Rush bill, it says we're getting a complete motor. We re- and re-, if we're getting the complete motor, why are we buying an oil pan?
Where do you see that? Oh yeah, oil pan and/or gasket replace.
Gasket replace. I guess the EGR valve or the coolant pressure test is being done and then the, uh, diagnosed, diagnosis inspection. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm just curious if it's a, if it's a full drop-in motor. And we used to refer to them as long blocks and short blocks. A long block is a complete motor, a short block, you use your old heads, you use your old, old oil pan, all those peripheries. So I'm just curious, it says complete, but you're not buying more oil pan. I'm just wondering why.
You're not buying an oil pan. You're just paying the labor to put it back on.
And a new gasket.
Yeah.
And just labor.
Yes, okay, my, my, my mistake there, you're, you're absolutely correct. However, I guess, why would you put it on a complete engine?
No, you're an oil pan, a 3D engine. Just get the block, head.
Do you have to, do you have to use your original head then too?
No, you don't get the head with it, you don't get the-
All right, okay, good enough, you know, that, that answers my question.
One question I have, a little on, on it, and I've read that, uh, coolant pressure test the vehicle. I believe this vehicle, the trouble was, was with, that caused the antifreeze get in it in the first place, uh, with the coolant system, like the way it's designed, that it leaked and leaked it in. So why is the, I know it's different than price, but then you look down at, at ET performances and they got, uh,
Buying one.
New coolant assembly.
Yeah.
That's why their price is hi- higher, 'cause they've got a thirty-nine hundred dollar coolant, uh, assembly in there, but they've just gone up here and just pressure tested it.
Yeah, then it's gonna come back, then it failed the pressure test, and it's gonna be extra. And that's what caused the problem anyways.
That's what caused it, first place.
First place, so we already know, you don't even have to pressure test it, you know that's not good.
Yeah.
I, that's the way I look at it.
But, Mr. Mayor, I think I have another question as well here, and, you know, we're bidding twenty, twenty-eight hundred dollars to re- and re.
Now where are you looking?
Okay, Rush, twenty-eight hundred dollars to re- and re. And then we're paying five hundred and forty dollars to transfer parts. And we're looking at four hundred dollars to transfer the oil pan. Doesn't, doesn't look, doesn't, I'm a little confused on that.
Well, I mean, let's put it this way, we've got three numbers in front of us.
Well, it is what it is.
Well, I mean, I got three numbers in front of me, I got thirty-six hundred, I got forty-nine hundred.
Thousand.
I got forty-nine thousand, and it looks to me like I've got fifty-three thousand. Now, as far as individ, as far as these three quotes telling me what I'm buying, the Peterbilt service quote tells me absolutely nothing about what I'm buying. One engine, thirty-five thousand. I'm sorry, I just don't know what's included, what's not included, but then I got an engine MO, what's an engine MO? I got two of them. I got two insulators, and I got two motor MO, they must be motor mounts. No extensions on any of this. I'm looking at ET performance, I've got some detail here, and what really catches my attention is, he addresses the cooler assembly right up front, he addresses the EGR valve assembly right up front. I got a, a pretty fair idea. It says new engine, it gives me a part number, updated assembly, what does updated assembly mean, Mr. Parts Man? What does updated assembly mean?
Um, I'm gonna have to, uh, I'm gonna have to fall back on the fact that I've been out of the business for twenty years, and so I'm obsolete.
The chair notes, the chair notes that the, uh, that the Counselor pleads the fifth.
If that's the one you wanna read, it's okay.
I think they changed on the max force, when they're blowing up so many of them there, they changed the coolant assembly some, somewhere or never, never there to correct.
Oh, I see.
Situation.
So it's a new type of sample.
Jim mentioned there that they, they had changed the, assembly on them somewhere or never to help stop.
So anyway, I got a forty-nine thousand dollar invoice there, then I got Rush. Now, the thing that bothers me about Rush, and it's already been mentioned, the EGR cooler pressure test is gonna be done in the vehicle. Guaranteed it's gonna fail, and that's gonna be an add-on to the thirty-six, guaranteed. The other thing that bothers me is that this quote is dated oh-five, oh-six, twenty-twenty. Is that May the sixth or June the fifth? I don't know which it is, it's either May the fifth, May the sixth, or June the sixth. And it's good for thirty days, no, I don't know whether it's May or June, but thirty days is off. Are you gonna live with this thing or not? I'm not-
This might've been the original.
And what, and I mean, one, you may have fit this already, but under the notes, it says, about that same date, six thirty-four AM, dealer will be placing here.
What's that, Mr. Mayor?
On the, on the, on the Rush, repair ticket under notes.
Under notes, you said?
Under notes, on the bottom, sort of the middle part of it.
Six, six, three, four, five, please.
You've got it underlined, just above your finger, go up a little higher.
Yeah.
A little higher, you go and go over there. It says replace EGR cooler.
No cost.
Well, it's just under notes, I mean, it's not in the-
That's the same date.
Why did it just say replace?
It, it says they're gonna pressure test, but then in the notes it says replace it, so, like I think there's a bit of question there for me.
And so we're not getting a new motor when it says new from, uh-
It's not new, remanufactured.
Reman-, it's a new engine.
ET force, when it says a new engine? It's not new?
It's not brand spanking new, no, it's been re, it's been re, remanufactured. They've taken the old block and they, if they've had to sleeve it, they've sleeved. If they've had to do this and that to it, they've done it.
But the item number is the same as, uh, as Peterbilt- But the item number is the same as, uh, as Peterbilt's. So it's the same engine? Like, I mean, if you look at the model number, five zero one oh nine forty-two R ninety-one. Engine, thirty-five thousand, it's the same number as, uh, E and T?
Should, should be the same model number for all.
I, I don't get a model number though with rush. I don't know what they're putting, putting in the remanufactured says. If you know it's the same, it's the same, uh, model number. I just have a problem with rush, uh, on that, on this quotation, right from the word go when I saw the date, actually made saves. And then I got the cooler pressure test, like, that was, that was a no game, Brainerd, that's what happened.
Yeah, but then the notes say to replace the cooler, which if you go to the other quotes, is where the big difference in the price is.
Oh, absolutely.
The base price for the engine is virtually identical, other than the EGR valve assembly and the cool.
Julie, Chair, when this, when this, uh, happened, mishap, we're just poof. Did, did it go right to rush, or did it go somewhere else first? Isn't this the one that went to ET first and then ended up at rush?
Yeah, I think ET was called it.
Is that what happened?
Then it was taken to ET and then up to rush, I believe.
That, is that what?
So through, 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 through the chair, I, I, I believe that ET Performance came to try to see if he could get the unit going, was unable to, was told to ET to, to do a, a further, a further detailed inspection, and then we, we told it to rush to get a second opinion.
Where is the truck right now?
Um, I'm not sure, do, do you, do you, is it?
Through the chair, it's at rush.
Is that rush right now?
Well, chairs looking for direction here, gentlemen?
Well, rush is a little bitter, but I'd like a lot more clarification exactly what he's doing there before four, five, six, five, no, or different, difference between him and ET, T of them there, but be, if he comes back and fuel, water, and all this is added in there, that's the same price as what ET's putting in there.
And I like ET where it says upon disas- uh, disassembly and replace all fluids and filters, if there's a problem, you advise us of extra cost.
Remember, it's gonna cost us about two hundred bucks to get us from, to get it from rush back to ET.
That's a small price to pay.
I guess it is.
We just have a bit of prob- problem with coming back there after we got kind of site swept and the other truck, we ended up doing border, border job on, on, when it should have been done under warranty and shouldn't have told them.
Ten thousand, huh?
Yep.
Yep. I, I liked it, yeah. Chairs looking for direction? I know it's a higher price, uh, ET, but I do feel more warm and fuzzy taking the ET, ET, than to give it to rush. You getting support for that?
I would support that.
I'm hearing ET, I'm not hearing any fuzzy, any fuzzy, any fuzzy, uh, endorsements of rush trucks on it.
Well, hang on, so, well, the, one of the big things for me when we're doing this entire job is warranty, and so what's the ET warranty?
Not addressed, eh?
Yeah, I mean.
What I, what I don't understand is, when a staff gets this stuff put together, don't they ask these suppliers all these questions? Don't they say to these suppliers, listen, you're ta- we're taking this back to a bunch of dummies. You better tell us on your quote what you're including and what you're not including. Does the staff not make sure that, that we're comparing apples with apples and oranges with oranges? Because we're, we're all over the place here. We, we were all over the place when we met here in June, now it's July, we said in June, get us two more quotes so that we are on the same page here, we're not on the same page.
So, so through, through the chair, I, I, I will, I will apologize for that. Um, in, in, in reality, I was planning to bring this to Public Works, not have been in Finance. It got on me too quick. So we will, we, we will take that back, and, and we will make sure that it is apples to apples, oranges to oranges, and we will, we, we will get it done. And if it takes till council i- i- in August, that's, that, that's what we'll do, but we'll make sure that it's crystal clear.
Everybody satisfied with that?
I am.
Great, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I need a quote to get.
Good, that's where it is.
Yeah, with thirty-eight there.
Thank you very much, Mr. CIO, I appreciate your resolution of this problem. All right, now we're at item eight, council inquiries, notices of motion. Anybody got anything to bring up there?
I do not.
Well, I want to say this, and I, I find it difficult to say. But I'm going to say it under notices of motion. I'm very concerned about the, about the preventative maintenance program. I, I'm not comfortable that our preventative maintenance program is being executed in a robust manner. I, at this point, I don't know how to deal with it, because at this point, the ex- we, we as a council have done our, our job setting and, well, let me put it this way, we've ensured that we have a preventive maintenance program in place. We've done, we've done that, we've set it up. But it's in the hands of the staff to execute upon it in a robust manner. And I'm not so sure that that's what's happened, I, I'm not comfortable. And I'm, and I'm looking for solutions to the, to the, to the, I'm looking for solutions and I'm looking for reassurances, I guess you could start with. So, I don't know whether to bring it up as a motion or how to bring it up, but I think we've got to, as a group, resolve this maintenance, preventative maintenance problem. We've seen three major problems with three major vehicles. And I know it's easy to say that was a bad engine, da, 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 but the long and the short of it is that we know as a matter of fact that some operators are using these engines and provide, provided that they follow the maintenance manuals as per the instructions in the maintenance manuals, the engines are, are lasting. Ours didn't, ours didn't. So I'm just gonna leave that like that. And in the meantime, in between now and the next meeting, I'm gonna be looking for some input. Anybody else got any comments here, hearing done?
I just, sorry, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just have one, and I, I don't know, but Friday afternoon, I heard that we're having problems with the dehumidifier at our community center in Cardinal. Any truth, yes, no?
So through, 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 through the chair, yes, we are, and, uh, planning, planning to have a report to, in, in front of the committee for, for next Monday.
Is it bad, or no, or do we know yet?
Through, through, through the chair, it's, it's not good.
Is it gonna affect the ice?
Uh, through, through, through the chair, no, and, uh, we, we're, we're, we're working through that on, on, on a couple possible, um, Band-Aid solutions to, 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 to get us, to get us through, so, you know. Uh, I, I, I'd like to get a little more fulsome understanding of, of, of everything, and, uh, we'll, we'll bring something back on, on, on Monday.
Is that gonna be soon enough? My, my understanding is that the, the, the ice is rendered as of Saturday.
Oh, is it?
Uh, correct, that is correct.
So is Monday soon enough?
I, 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 I believe that Monday is soon enough.
Thank you. Okay, anybody, Councilor Hunter?
I just have one inquiry there. I've made a couple of trips and I read your post from down, uh, at the waterfront that you had on there, day there, and I go down and, uh, I know we, Bushes didn't want to post any signs down there, but I've been down there twice and I think we're gonna be into a real problem down there one of these times with the kids swimming on that boat launch. There, somebody's gonna get hurt there if we don't get a sign up saying no swimming at the boat launch there. I've been down twice in the afternoon, and there've been kids swimming with floaties on right in between the boat ramp and parents sitting off, if somebody comes in with a boat goes in there, they can't even see those kids there until they turn to go to bring a boat in, like, they shouldn't be swimming in between them at that boat launch. You wanna swim up to our docks? That's fine, but at that boat launch, that's a dangerous place to have kid, young kids in there swimming between those boat ramps and.
So you're just recommending the posting of some signs?
There should be a sign posted there, and no swimming in between the boat, at the boat ramp there.
Okay.
There, there is, there is sort of, sort of a, sort of a a sign, but we used to stencil on the dock, no swimming. It was stenciled two or three times on each dock. Um, and now we've got gangways as well, um, but I had brought that up before.
So am I getting a nodding of heads here to agree with Councilor Hunter?
Not the stencil though.
Not the stencil.
No.
Not stencil?
Not the stencil, the new dock.
Just a sign up, like, like, Councilor Gilbald brought it up once before. Here, I know there's little kids and they want some place to do, so I'd say put a sign on there, there and invest in a couple of truckloads of sand and take up and dump there where the little ones want to swim and just kinda wash out there. Put that one in there, and maybe then they'd go up, up to the smaller ones and swim up there and say swim in there.
I got four, seventy-year-olds that swim there every day too, and I.
So if I can jump in.
I do.
I think we need to look at, at why so many people choose that area over the other options, especially as we plan forward for renovations, I mean, that doesn't fix the signage problem. But, but recognizing that people are choosing to use that area for a reason over others, whether it's their dog can walk in directly and not have to jump in.
It's ease of in, it's ease of entry.
So we need to think of that, though, as, as we move forward, and you're making a great point that people are swimming there and using it, and, and it's too narrow and people could get hurt. But when we're planning our other areas, I think those are really important things to, to look at. I've been down there lots of times trying to, you know, watch what's going on, there's people using their dog, they're with their dogs, they don't have a clue who I am. And, and I asked them, would you use a dog ramp, one of the other ones, like the one by the canteen, if it was actually better? And they're like, well, this is the easiest place to get the dog to swim. So, you know, for your seventy-year-olds, maybe it's the same thing, maybe it's, you know, making a place that has a better access.
Well, I know, I, I had a, I had a s- a senior citizen, well over seventy, tell me, this is the only place where I can get in and out.
He didn't know, sure.
Mm-hmm, I know, same one, yeah. So, I mean, on a previous meeting, Counselor Cameron had brought up to try to put some sand up at what is called Richardson's Point on the west side of the point.
Correct.
Where there was a, already a bit of a natural beach, did that ever get done, do we know?
I think that was mine.
Okay, maybe, my apologies.
That's okay.
Did that ever get, would that get action, you're told, you know?
Down through, through, through the chair, I, 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 I'm not sure.
Okay, well, I think in view of this discussion, it probably should be, uh, looked at again. Relatively cheap and easy to do, a couple phone calls. Uh, anything else under notices of motion here before I go on? Yes, oh, sorry.
We don't have any council direction to do that at this point.
On the sand?
Correct. That's the council direction.
Oh, hang on one second. Council provided facilities with about a million bucks. If there isn't enough money in that budget for a couple of loads of sand, and a couple hundred dollars a load, uh, I think, I think we need to know about it, especially if there's not enough flexibility. But remember, as of this point in time, we haven't seen the work plan, uh, for that million bucks.
So, hold on, so through.
Can I just make a motion? That, 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 just make a motion to, to direct staff to, uh, add uh, an appropriate amount of sand to the beach at the west point of Richardson's, or at the rest, the west side of Richardson's Point.
Need a second there.
Got it.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
There we go, there's your direction.
So if I, if, 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 if I'm going through, through, through the chair, I, I, I believe that staff has been very flexible in, in, in a number of items that have arose from, from, from committee and taken, taken action in, in, in different, in, in different situations. The, the one, the one thing that I just would, would say, not that I'm not in support of the no swimming signage, but we have to be careful that we're not ending up with sign pollution. We, we see, we seem to be putting up a sign for almost anything and everything, and it, it can get, it can get somewhat distracting for, for, for people coming to that area, knowing what, what they can do, what they can't do, items like that, so it's, it's just something to.
Well, and, and you know, along the same lines, there's quite a number of signs that point out poison parson. And another way of dealing with that is to get rid of the poison parson, and then you get rid of the sign.
Well, it's, it's a work, it's a work in progress.
And we get rid of COVID and get rid of COVID signs.
We might get rid of COVID at the same time, I don't know.
Another point is that would you have four minutes for your mayor's report, or are we needed?
Well, I don't have to make a mayor's report at all, you guys don't wanna know what's going on. All right, let's just point it out. So there's four minutes left. I, I wanna inform you of a couple of things. So, you all know that we withdrew the six acres that we own on County Road Two, in front of our industrial park, we withdrew that from sale, uh, largely because, uh, we had a, an individual that was in the business of developing warehouses that was intensely interested in that particular acreage. Now, that same, uh, gentleman has been back to talk to us. As a matter of fact, we had a meeting here a week or so ago, and he has another proposal for us. And, uh, this proposal does not involve that six acres. It's quite a robust proposal, and it involves the development of not one warehouse, but more than one. And, um, his proposal seems to have some real legitimacy to it, and he seems to be in a position to uh, execute and have the financial ability to do so. The long and the short of it all, as, as, as a result of that meeting with him, uh, the CIO is arranging a meeting, and I'll ask you to keep the time free for Monday, August the twenty-fourth. Now, um, Mr. CIO, did you have a time in mind for that, I think it was prior to, uh, the council meeting, was it not? Like, at four o'clock or something like that?
So, so through, through, through the chair, I'm still, I'm, I'm still working on, on, on that. We, we do have, uh, we do have a, um, a management review in, in, in the morning on the twenty-fourth. So, uh, it probably would be, uh, either, um, as, as, as part of a closed session at, at council, or potentially before around that four PM.
Okay, but mark that date in any case. Now, I just want to give you a brief update on the job site challenge. Uh, so the CIO and I had a teleconference with Novatek, uh, a few days ago. Uh, they're doing a fair amount of work, let me tell you first of all, that they've completed a, quite a number of studies as per our arrangement with them. They've completed the natural heritage review, phase one, which was a desktop study, and it recommends going to phase two. They've completed an archaeological assessment, stage one, which is a desktop study, and it is also recommended going to stage two. They've re- they've completed a preliminary groundwater impact assessment, it's in draft form, they haven't finalized it. They've completed a preliminary geotechnical assessment, also in draft form. And they are, have done some initial work with regard to the county official plan amendment to change designation of that land to regionally significant employment area. And they've determined that there was some initial work done by county about three to four years ago when the county official plan was underway. And they feel that they don't have to start from scratch. They can build upon that plan. The staff at Novatech is working to try to find the best area in the two thousand acres that we've submitted to them. They've tried to pick out the best thousand acres, in case we get to a position where the township has to actually buy the land and then be the, be the developer that sells it. And so the amount of land that we're gonna have to buy is, it's important that it be reduced to its minimal size. They're also working on determining best access routes into and out of the area to that best land. Now, they are recommending that there be no further work on their part until we know about where we stand with our application. So where we stand with our application, the applicant, the, the closed, I know that. Yeah, I know. I need a motion to go beyond ten o'clock. I need five more minutes. Mr. Bradley, seconded by Mr. Robertson. Those in favor? It's carried. The application's closed on the thirty-first. We're first, our, my first objective is to determine how many submissions they have. And we'll go from there. I just wanted to bring you a little bit of an update on Daily. Had another email exchange with their lawyer on Friday, and I expect that we will see an offer to purchase along about August the twenty-first. He's away on weeks holidays. The industrial park hydro demand study has been delivered to the local Brockville office. I've discussed it with the local Brockville manager. And I'm now making arrangements to have it delivered to the independent electricity service provided for Eastern Ontario. They're the group that is responsible for ensuring that we have enough capacity to meet not only existing demand, but growing demand. And then the last thing I want to just talk about, just briefly, we all know that on September the fifteenth, it will be legal to hunt and shoot cormorants from actually a moving boat. And, but this last week, it was legal to protect our property. And in the act of protecting our property, our, our agent ran afoul of a conservation officer through no fault of his own. And I'm gonna explain the difficulty and hope you can understand it. Under the act which, which governs the hunting of ducks and geese, you can shoot the goose or the duck from the boat anchored. And if you wound the duck, you can get in your boat and go and dispatch him. If he's wounded and flopping around in the water, you can dispatch him from your boat. However, loons are not included under that act, or, oh, cormorants are not included under that act. So if you wound a cormorant from your boat, you're not allowed to go on your boat and dispatch him. And so you end up with a ticket. As of September the fifteenth, of course, it'll be legal. So that's the essence of, of the issue, and it'll be a while till it unfolds. We'll see how it goes. They pardon me, did John get a ticket? Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of money?
A lot of money. Okay.
How much, Mr. Mayor?
Eh?
How much?
Six hundred.
That's a lot of money.
And the conservation officer can't use discretion?
Yes, of course he can. Okay, so now I've had item number ten on the agenda, which is question period. And.
Not at this time.
And item number eleven, we have no closed session, I don't think.
I have the dead one.
I'm looking for the motion.
Hang it in there.
I'm looking for the motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
I see.
Okay, Mr. Robertson or Mr. Bradley, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Made it before the four minutes itself.